We're probably twenty minutes later and it was cracking.
Oh.
Okay?
We can look like we're going to.
We can continue when they're in executive session. Stay for a few more minutes. Stay for a few more minutes. Stay for a few more minutes, please.
Jimmy, Jimmy. Are we recording? All right.
Ms. Gloria's leaving.
Gloria, you can stay because we're gonna be leaving here shortly. All right. I now call the city, the Suquami City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Mayhew, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I please have the roll call?
Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Um, Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Lasey.
Here.
Councilmember Sundeck.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Holloway.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Larson has asked to be excused.
May I have a motion to excuse? Do I need to excuse Mayor Larson?
No.
No. Move on. Also, also in attendance tonight is Kevin Connolly, who is attending as a registered parliamentarian to keep me on task.
Good luck.
Uh, let's proceed on. All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted before you?
I move that the Public Safety Committee report be given before the Parks and Public Works Committee report.
Uh, hang on a second. So I believe first we need a motion to accept the agenda. And a second.
Second.
And then we do a motion to modify.
I move that the Public Safety Committee report be given before the Parks and Public Works Committee report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor moving up the public safety report?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to the original motion. Any discussion on tonight's agenda tonight? If not, may, uh, all those in favor of accepting tonight's agenda tonight? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion is carried. Moving on. I will not re-read, but let's be aware, today is Gloria McNeeley Day. So I at least wanted to have that again on the official agenda, that today is Gloria McNeeley Day in the city of Suquami. If you want cake and water, it's over in the corner. Second proclamation, tonight is for Children's Dental Health Month. Whereas the future is to a large measure depended upon good health of our families, whereas, whereas, good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits learned early and reinforced through life, be resolved that I, Brian Holloway, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Suquami, proclaim the month of February as Children's Dental Health Month and urge that all citizens and community organizations join in this observance. Uh, there's further information on the website. There's also a link to, uh, for children, uh, to receive, uh, help in getting dental health checkups this month. Okay? Uh, with that, I would like to recess us into, wait. I'd like to recess the meeting for an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I I I I regarding potential litigation. Bob Sterbank and Bob Larson and Dan Marcinco, Chief Phipps and Kevin Connolly are requested to be in attendance. The execution, executive session is expected to last approximately thirty minutes and that, and there may be action following. I invite you to continue the reception for McNeeley Gloria as we go to an executive session. We will leave and we will come back in about thirty minutes. All right. Thank you. For we are temporarily adjourned. Are we recessed?
Well, this is Kwame City Council back in order. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments for items not on the agenda tonight. Due to the length of the agenda this evening, comments will be limited to two minutes. In order to keep an orderly meeting, citizens have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an effective and orderly manner. Please wait to be recognized, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, deliver comments in an efficient and courteous manner, avoid comments that are unduly repetitious or are not relative to the city business. Address the city council administration as a whole, do not single out individuals. The council will only listen to your comments, please do not be offended if they do not respond. I have been counseled many times not to do that. Are there those wishing to talk on items not currently on the agenda tonight? Monica, please step forward.
Good evening, Council. Monica Leoni, P.O., Box 493. I want to talk about the $183,000 sidewalk that the city recently approved to put on the hill behind the YMCA where park trails are already provided. The Curtis Way, which also runs along the top of the hill, has sidewalks on both sides of the street, so if people need to push a baby stroller or walk their kids to school and get there without slipping or getting their feet dirty, they could use that. Based on the training I just went to today at 4:30 regarding quasi-judicial, I don't know if this falls under a land issue, but it seems to be a land use issue to me, and under the arbitrary capricious decision-making guidelines and appearance of fairness doctrine, I believe it was completely unfair to have Dan Marcinco, our current Public Works Director, who will live just three houses down from the beginning of this $183,000 sidewalk, which will benefit his property values, to propose it. I did also attend the Parks and Public Works meeting where this was discussed. I asked how the city justified this sidewalk. They completely drained a fund that has been building for over 10 years to put this sidewalk in when there are other needs in the city. And basically, Dan said, well, he didn't have any written complaints, and now evidently we have another council member claiming the school district requested it five years ago. I'd like to see that in writing, I don't believe it. But basically, due to the fact that I am a fiscal conservative, I believe also Heather Munden voting to approve this sidewalk when she also lives on Curtis Avenue was inappropriate according to the appearance of fairness doctrine. She should have stepped down from the vote for that. I am requesting that this entire issue be stopped and put back on the agenda for further review and go back to Parks and Public Works for proper justification and proof that the city has done their due diligence before spending $183,000. Thank you.
Others wishing to make comment on items not on the agenda this night? Yes, sir.
Hello, council members. This is Ashish Kala, 3511 Southeast Wurri Creek Lane. I wish to, to your notice, that there is no sidewalk on the east side of the parkway between the Orchard Avenue and the Better Avenue, which forces our residents to cross over the road. In a subsequent agenda, we'll discuss that in a very unsafe manner. It would be in the interest of the community to have sidewalks on both sides of parkways so they are connected. Thank you.
Again, anybody else for items not currently on the agenda? If not, we will move on to public hearings, presentation, and appointments. Tonight, I would like to appoint Councilmember Shepherd to the liaison position for the Parks and Events Commission, and Councilmember Mayhew to the Human Services Committee. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It moves on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed below will be enacted by one motion. Action items include approval of minutes, January 22nd, 2018, council meeting; January 26th through 27th, 2018, council retreat; approval of warrants, claims warrants number 43749 through 43788 totaling $105,653.22; warrants 43789 through 43828, slip checks; warrants 43829, 43897; and void warrant 43867 totaling $310,511.61. As stated in the agenda package. All right, also warrants 43898 through 43951 totaling $105,643.22; warrants 43952 through 43965 totaling $66,710. Let me back up. So, you were advising me I don't need to read all this?
Correct.
Okay. Let's back up. Approval of warrants as stated in the agenda package, also approval of Agenda Bill 18028, inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce Local Government Division, grant number 17-96608-322 solar grant, also Agenda Bill 18029, Resolution 1436, adopting an amendment to the Suquami Open Space Parks and Recreation Plan; Agenda Bill 18032, work contract for services agreement between the City of Suquami and the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust for the Saver Suquami Valley Project; Agenda Bill 18034, approval of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendation for the 2018 revised funding allocation for Meadowbrook Farm marketing activities. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second? No, they have the opportunity, but don't ask. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Yeah, they can do that during discussion. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any of these items prior to action? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, seven to zero. All right. Reports, Public Safety Committee. Agenda Bill 18031, Resolution 1438, adopting the Suquami Fire Department Standards of Coverage Introduction 1222, Possible Action Consent Agenda 226.
So, as part of the fire department's accreditation process, the standards of coverage document was required to document critical evaluation of incident types, fire threat, and community hazard assessments. So, this is introduction tonight, and we hope to approve it at the next council meeting, February 26th.
I can speak to it a little bit more if you'd like. Mark Carrera, Fire Chief, City of Suquami. This is a project that we've been working on for probably the last eight to nine months. It was a team effort between myself, Lieutenant Jake Fouts, Captain Mike Bailey, and Tom Monroe. This document is really a deep dive into what the services the fire department provides. In the agenda bill is a memo, the SOC adoption memo, that actually is kind of a high-level view of each section, all five sections that are in the document, and then you can dive into the hundred-and-some-odd-page document if you so choose. Again, this is one of the required elements, similar to our strategic plan, that's required for accreditation. So, and I can take any questions either this meeting or the next one, if anybody has any.
Any discussion, council?
So, I've read it. It's very detailed, it's a great comprehensive document, and includes what our community expectations are based on surveys, and it contains the community risk assessment measures, it includes response time elements, and it actually shows the history of our response times. So, I encourage you to read it, and it's quite a document, so everyone should have a file copy of it.
No further discussion. I stated this was introduced this time will be on the consent agenda in next council. With that, we moved on to Parks and Public Works Agenda Bill 18027, consulting agreement with Aspect Consulting for Canyon Springs Waterline Landslide Slope Repair and Geotechnical Design.
Canyon Springs is a critical water source for the city, generated approximately 1,500 acre-feet per year of drinking water. A landslide occurred in mid-November that threatens the water line from the spring source, which if not addressed soon may result in failure of the water line, extended disruption of service and supply operations, and potentially cost of repairs. Move to approve a consulting agreement with Aspect Consulting for the Canyon Springs Waterline Landslide Slope Repair, Geotechnical Design, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Correct. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Okay, so, we're ready to move into the next phase on this project.
Jeff, introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Jeff Hammond, and I'm an engineer with the city. And so, we are ready to move into the next phase of this project, which is really the design phase. As a quick reminder, it's attached with this agenda bill, it's a timeline of how we got here, and I can provide a quick reminder. We had a landslide, of course, back in mid-November, thereabouts. Our water crew was up there doing regular maintenance and noticed the landslide, took some photographs and brought them back, and we were, of course, alarmed by that. And luckily, we had Aspect Consulting with a pretty solid geotechnical group already under contract on a different bit of work, so we engaged them right away to come up and take a look, and simultaneously, we got to work on trying to figure out what we had up there as far as facilities, and put together a PowerPoint display, which, you know, we presented to executive staff and to the council at that time. And it was, we thought, a significant enough threat to declare an emergency and get two consulting firms on board to help us out to address immediately the concerns of this imminent future failure of this water line. So, we proceeded to get some work done and get a report drawn up for, basically, to assess, you know, the condition of the water line and the threat level that we're facing. And it's pretty clear that we got to do something very quickly. That report is attached to the agenda bill. The consultant, Aspect, also provided us with some recommendations. The recommendation is pretty clear, it kind of falls into the no-brainer category. There's a fairly simple solution, which is relatively economical to do, and I would recommend that we follow their recommendation. It's, it can get us up to 50 years of stability for where we apply these. It's easier to permit, and it's less disruptive to the slope and to the environment. So, that's where we'd like to go. Aspect gave us a proposal to do the next phase of work, which includes the design, further analysis, we need to get survey done, we want to, well, we have several things, we have to get plans and specs drawn up, we need to get through bidding, and then there's a construction phase. So, their scope proposal includes all the way from design through bidding and construction. And then also, we also have to do some permitting. We've got several things that have to happen right away.
Okay. Council, any questions or discussion?
Yeah, so Jeff, the $92,000 doesn't get anything built, correct? It gets the design, and then after the $92,000 is spent, that design will say what they're going to do, which I think involves netting or something like that, and then there'll be an additional cost associated with actually building out the solution. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The construction cost, which I don't have a solid construction, I mean, I've taken a rough estimate at it, but at this point, I'm reluctant to give you a figure for how much the construction is going to be until we get design done.
But that'll be a separate action of council.
Okay, and do we have a timeline on how long this design will take and therefore the construction? Is this something we'll have before the next rainy season will be done?
I'm hoping to have it done by October. Yeah, I think it's about eight weeks of construction time. So, if we can get to it by August, we can get through it by October.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Proton, so do we have any concern? I thought when we talked about it in December, that potentially, the fix would happen maybe starting in April or May. So, do we have any concern by waiting till October, or are there any temporary fixes?
I was hoping to get to it by April. I think if we take the emergency route, we could do that, but I don't think we have to. I think we can get it done this summer without going the emergency route. So, this way, we can actually get bids and do the normal course of action.
So, are the precautions we'll take, though, are we going to continue monitoring it between now and October to make sure that the pipe's not going to fall off?
Yeah, certainly, yeah. All we can, yeah, yeah. I mean, is once we initiate the design phase, there's several things that are going to be happening. One of them is to go up and take additional samples, we need to get some lab work done, need to classify the soil a little bit better along the entire alignment where we're going to be applying this netting technique. And then they take that and they do an analysis with a computer software simulation that they use to design these. And so, it's a process that goes along with it, but as far as monitor- And so, it's a process that goes along with it, but as far as monitoring the thing, you know, we won't be putting any kind of slope monitors on it. I don't think that that's really money well-spent at this point. Right now, it's really, you know, streaking to the finish line.
Counsel Mayhew?
All right, actually, I've got a couple of questions. I just note in the document up there, Canyon Springs Sequence of Actions, I just noticed at the bottom of that document, you estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars to complete this. So, we're thinking that's roughly, give or take, maybe a fair amount, but roughly the sort of total project we're looking at?
That is a high end on it, yeah. I would say that's on the high end, that's conservative.
All right, so then, I just want to ask, I want to understand this point that you made about taking the emergency approach or not. So, I, I'm not a water expert, but I see the fifteen hundred feet per year measurement.
Acre-feet per year, correct, yeah.
Thank you. So, what, I'm not sure how to ask this, so I'll stumble through a question, perhaps you could, sure, tell me the question I ought to be asking. I want to ask what percentage of, of our total supply is, or I suppose the better question is, if we go out to our peak period, which I assume is late summer, how, how, if we were to lose that line, and we were in late summer, would our other sources, how much, what sort of demand are we looking at versus what the other sources could supply? So, and maybe help us understand why you don't think we need to be on an emergency approach?
Sure. So, as far as what percentage of our water in total volume, I don't know what that is. Todd might know better, about quarter of our water, I think, quarter to a third of our water comes from there. But at certain times of the year, the majority of it comes from there. So, right now, for instance, we're getting the majority of our water from Canyon Springs, especially right now because the North Well Field is down.
And that's due to some voluntary, some scheduling decisions we make about when we take our wells down and have them up, is that right?
So, it's also, the quality of that water out of the North Field is better than the other fields, so we do a conscious decision to pull. At one stage, it was up to, almost sixty percent of the water was coming from that field, okay? If we do get into condition this summer where we're, that goes out and we're pulling heavy from the other wellfields, there will be a noticeable difference in the water.
Right, and that's primarily the smell, is that correct?
Well, the, the, well, water from the South Well Field is not as good a quality as what we get from the North Well Field or from Canyon Springs. Canyon Springs, there is no better water.
And so, do we taste that, or do we smell that? How do we experience that?
I believe it has kind of an ammonia smell, right? Yeah, it says nitrates, heavy nitrates, it has a, a kind of a, I'd say, kind of a musty ammonia smell to it.
All right, so there's a smell that associates with the, but, but my key question is, if we were to lose that line at our peak time, and we brought all our wellfields up, would we be able to meet our demand, or would we not?
Yes, we would, yeah. We could operate without Canyon Springs, although we would need, if we lost Canyon Springs altogether, if we abandoned the spring source, then we would have to look for an alternative source of water.
Sure, but for a temporary period, if, and that's, I suppose, why you don't see an emergency to it, because we could survive a period without it. Is that, am I getting this right?
Yeah, yeah, we could, and maybe even indefinitely, but it would be uncomfortable.
Right, okay, thank you.
Counsel Mayhew, or Counsel Lusay?
I just want to stay on that, the same topic, because I'm not sure I'm getting a full understanding, because it was, I mean, it was, it was a, I don't understand how we can go from an emergency not to non-emergency. We spent twenty thousand dollars to determine that it was an emergency, to move forward with something. And I'm concerned, because previously, you did, I don't know if, I'm sorry, Jeff, I don't know if it was you or it was someone else in a, in a previous discussion, stated that if we were to lose Canyon Springs sometime in the springtime, we would not have enough water during peak times in the summer, being August and September. So, what has changed from that statement previously?
Okay, maybe you didn't understand at the time, so right now, we are, we have some service happening at the North Well Field. So, the North Well Field right now is down, it's not operational. However, we could get it up and running. We don't have SCADA, our control system is not up and running. So, we could run the North Well Field in an emergency. We would shut off Canyon Springs, and then we would power up the pumps over at the North Well Field to supply the water. Unfortunately, because we don't have controls, somebody would have to man it essentially twenty-four hours a day to, to, you know, just to meet the demand.
Monitor pressures and all this stuff.
And fluctuate demands, right, yeah, because, you know, at certain times of day, demand goes up, right? So, it just, it's just going to be constant monitoring and attention. So, that is kind of the, that was the immediate concern back then. Now, moving forward, if, once the North Well Field gets back online, which is supposed to be in, I think, a month or two, you know, that threat is basically over, and we could, you know, meet the demands of the city for water if we lose Canyon Springs. However, then, the, the times that we're most concerned about losing the water line at Canyon Springs is right now, at the winter, when we have these saturated soils, heavy storms, you know, that's the time when it's most susceptible to landsliding. In the summer, we see very little bit of that, because soils dry out, it's more stable conditions.
So, the idea is that if there were additional slides at Canyon Springs that potentially pulled that offline, we're going to know that in the next few months anyway. It's not necessarily going to happen during the summertime, because the soil will be more stable.
Yeah, so we took the emergency approach initially, because, one, well, for several reasons. One, though, it gets us through this two months of acquiring a consultant, right? So, that gets us onto a schedule where we can actually get the thing built under the normal route, right? Where if we would have delayed it, then we'd be trying to be constructing the thing late fall, you know? Or the risk is that we'd be pushed into the winter season to do the construction, where since we're, we're talking about consultants, they're qualms-based, we're not trying to save, we don't have, we're not going to save any money by going through a procurement to get the, the best consultant. We're going to, we can just go out and select the best consultant and, and move past that, right, and without doing the procurement, because it's going to cost the same, no matter who you hire.
There's, there's also some of the emergency action to figure out how stable that slope is. Until we did that analysis, you just didn't know. Now you know, you can take a breath.
Yeah, yeah.
So, one last, one last question, I'll be done. So, or just maybe it's a clarification, and this will be it. So, because the North Well Field will be on, back online within the next one to two months, and we could bring it up earlier if we absolutely had to, we have enough water and enough capacity and other sources to, to get us by if we follow the path that you've recommended in the sequence of actions?
Yes, that's right.
Counsel Ross?
So, in your report, it looks like you're going to stabilize the upper slope, but it does not prevent erosion of the slope below the system in the toe, so you're not stabilizing the, the lower slope.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. It would be very difficult to stabilize the lower slope. It would add a lot of cost, for one thing, but also, it doesn't get us that much. Right now, is, with the system that we're proposing, we suspect up to fifty years of design life from that. So, that's about as good as you can get up there, right? I mean, the system that's been there, is there now, has been there for thirty-four years. You know, we should be able to get fifty years out of this, or thereabouts, you know?
For upper and lower?
I'm sorry?
For upper and lower?
For the, yeah, for the upper and the lower. The, the lower will continue to, to steepen, but it's, you know, it's always going to do that, right? It's always going to be continually steepening, because you essentially have a conveyor at the bottom of this river, and every time the water comes up, it kind of eats into that toe of the slope and just washes away anything that sloughs off, so it's, it gets into this over steepening condition. And that's going to continue. Eventually, you know, there's a possibility, I mean, I can see two instances just from the LiDAR where we've had large slide events up in there, and that's always a risk, you know, so if, you know, we could spend a whole bunch of money and then lose it all on a big slide, all right? So, at this point, I think we're, we're better off taking these small steps, which aren't going to cost us as much. And then, maybe we'll take a look at bigger solutions, and to address the bigger solutions, you know, we kind of have to value our, our spring source, you know, what's that spring source worth to us? Well, you know, what's, it's worth as much as it would cost to replace it. So, if we lose it altogether, we got to look for another source of water. How much is that going to cost? That gives us a basis for comparison, all right? So, that's kind of the next phase. We have that going on with our utility comp plans, which are beginning here soon. And then, once we get an evaluation on, you know, the spring source, then we can decide how much money we want to spend to, you know, make any kind of repairs or improvements, which will ensure its continued use into, you know, a much distant future.
Yeah. Any further, all right?
So, we had two different people coming out to look at one the hillside and one the pipe. What happened with the pipe?
So, initially, early on, we, we had the, the slope that we had to address immediately, that was the major concern. But as I was looking at it, I saw ten other things that I was also concerned about with this, depending on what we decided to do. Certainly, there's some things that we're going to want, we're going to need RH2 to do as well. I want them to look at, say, security. Right now, we have folks going up there from all, I mean, I, there's so many people going up there right now, and they're walking right to our spring, and it's completely insecure. So, we need to do something about securing, just keep folks out of there. We need to get a fence or a gate up there, you know, to, to try to exclude the amount of traffic that's going up there. There's other things. If we need to stabilize the pipe somehow with the, with this slope stability, I'll want to have them take a look at, you know, some options for that. And there are some things that we could do if we lose any more soil, that we may need to do some additional roadway improvements, the accessway, the pathway that goes up there. In order to get some equipment up there, we're going to have to make some minor improvements so we can get small tract vehicles there. So, we want the, I just need some, I'm using them like a Swiss Army knife, and I haven't spent any money yet, because I want to save my bullets. We only have twenty thousand dollars, so we're going to save that money.
To answer your question, nothing has happened on that contract?
Right, we haven't spent any money. Sorry, that was a long answer for a simple question.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I'm just grateful for the detail. Thank you.
All right. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment on the item prior to action? Anna, come on up, sorry. Thank you, Bob.
Anna Sotella, seven seven one three, Senator Boulevard Southeast. Just one thing that I didn't really hear clarified, and maybe you did. The initial no-bid process for the emergency looking into, I just want to make sure that there will be a proper procuring and bid to get the actual job done. I didn't really quite hear that clarified. Kind of about what the smell and what this water is. One thing for me, as a business owner, it is tragic when we're using that crap water. Sorry, I just used that word, but that water, no, you know, that's that film on your shower. For me, it costs me having to replace ice machines. I've never had to replace ice machines so much, because it corrodes the metal. We have the hardest, one of two cities in the entire state of Washington that has the hardest water. When I looked into getting a water softener, it was tens of thousands of dollars. So, Starbucks, because they do use, they have to have the same coffee, they have actually two water softeners, because that water is so, so that white film, that's part of it. It's not just an ammonia smell, it's hard water. So, that white film on your shower, imagine that sometime when you come into the restaurant, I'm happy to show you my ice machines and how it's like corroding with white calcium type of deposits. So, just something to be said. Right now, it hasn't really been a problem.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved. Let's move on to Agenda Bill eighteen zero three zero, consultant agreement between the City of Suquami and Driftmire Architects PS for the library renovation project for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
The City of Suquami Administration, in coordination with the Facility Maintenance and Building Division, determined the old library, right there, located adjacent to City Hall, has reached a useful life and requires repairs and updates. A consultant is needed to assist the city in development, in development, the program requirements for renovation of the old library, to prepare construction documents and assist with bidding and construction oversight as needed. Move to approve consultant agreement between the City of Suquami and the Driftmire Architects PS for the library renovation project for an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Bill eighteen oh two seven, as stated by Councilmember Sunwall. Is there any discussion? Counselmember Bob?
So, I am concerned, this consultant will give us a better answer regarding the interior and the exterior work, and the building is in terrible shape, has been in terrible shape for some time. And I'm just afraid that it may not be worth saving. It may be better to level it and start over, or just perhaps sell it as is. And I'm not recommending those things, I'm just saying that we need to proceed with caution once we know what the exterior, we can pretty much know what the exterior work needs to be, but on the interior, there are some subjective items about renovating the kitchen, just what that means, and it depends on what other, what city uses or public uses there will be for that building. It could be, it could be a very expensive project, so let's just keep our eyes on this with respect to, let's not just approve the exterior work that has to be done without considering the interior work, because then we're going to get to the point where, well, we spent this much money, we'll have to do it all. So, I want to keep my eye on it, I'll encourage us to keep our eyes on it, once we get the report from these experts on, on the job.
Brian, can you talk to us about, I mean, if I remember from the committee meeting, a possible outcome is that it gets leveled, right? I mean, what we're paying these folks to do, almost thirty thousand dollars to do, is essentially assess the value it has, what it might cost to renovate at various levels, and whether or not, and then potentially whether or not that's worth it to us, right? So, we're authorizing this twenty-nine thousand dollars. Anything beyond that, basically whatever they come up with, you would bring back to us to say whether or not that's something we want to move forward on, right?
Correct. They're going to do the structural assessment, they're going to do some schematic designs of, about, basically bringing it up to ADA standards, that's one of the things that they'll be looking at. And that includes the bathrooms, which are not ADA compliant, American Disabilities Act, if, for those who don't know what ADA means. And then, we'll be, or I will be presenting it once we get that report completed.
And what do you expect the timing on that to be, and what is the funding source of the twenty-nine thousand?
The funding source is the facilities, the facilities fund, Fund one-ten, or five-ten, I'm sorry, and that has a current fund balance of nine hundred thousand, that's where it's going to be coming from, the twenty-nine thousand.
Okay, and the timing?
Well, once, once their contract is approved and the mayor has signed, they will get to work on it immediately, and I expect no more than a month or two.
Okay, hey, I think Bob has something to contribute.
I just want Brian to clarify your statement, because there was a question about, they'll do a feasibility study, a structural feasibility study, and they won't continue with any schematic designs if that feasibility study indicates that there's some major structural issues. You'll bring that back first.
Correct. Correct.
Counsel Mayhew?
Sorry, I just want to be sure I understand. So, is this expenditure in our approved budget, or is this not an expenditure in our approved budget, and so we're paying for it out of fund balance that isn't in our expenditure budget that's already approved?
This is included in the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen biennial budget.
Okay, so this would come out of already approved budget, it expense, expenditures not out of fund balance?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Ross?
So, can you tell me how the building is used now, and how often, and, and what the potential purpose might be after it's renovated, if we do that?
Well, that's...
Mayor Protem, if I could, I think it'd be best answered by our public, Parks Public Works Director, who's been more familiar with that issue.
Yes, we've been meeting the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, all the community groups throughout the valley have, use it on a variety of occasions, so it's, it's used quite a bit.
And so, that be the purpose once it's renovated as well, or we do other things with the building?
It'll be, it'll be added to our ERNR fund, which means we'll be, it'll be available for rent, so it can be for them or anybody that chooses, though, you know, we're going through it now, and we're, we've added it to our system where people will be able to see it and see what's available for space, because space is pretty high commodity right now, so.
It's not exclusively for the Boys and Girl Scouts, I want you to be clear on that. They're the primary users, but there's other groups that will use it, and the expectation will be open to the entire community, if, if and when it does get renovated.
Okay.
Counsel Lusay?
On that same subject, then, assuming they do the study and they determine that, what, does that also include then, analysis of the flooding potential and any... does that also include then analysis of the flooding potential and any improvements that have to happen in terms of bringing the building up, not only from an ADA standpoint, but from a usability standpoint, from a flooding, flooding, flood control? Do we need to raise it up? Do we need to do those sort of things? Is that part of the study as well?
That will be part of the study as well.
Okay.
Further discussion? Okay. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on this before we take action?
Leslie Shepherd, 7516, Snowberry Avenue Southeast. I have a problem with spending $30,000 to make a decision about what we're going to do with a building whose primary users can also use schools, churches. I mean, I was a Girl Scout through, my gold award through high school, so I love the Girl Scouts, happy that they're using it, but there are many alternatives in this neighborhood. $30,000, when, time and time again, I'm being told that the skate park, we're short money, this and that, we're short money, the things that the community really needs, that is, I'm sorry, a piece of junk eyesore building, it either needs to be renovated to make money, so for whatever use it's going to be is to make money, or it should be raised, because I know we need more parking, especially if we're going to use or lose parking for the winery, the Segala Winery. $30,000, that's a lot of money for someone to say what we're going to do with that building. I think the city as a whole can make that decision for free.
Monica?
Monica Looney. Okay, so I've been to some meetings where this building has been discussed with Parks and Public Works, and I believe it was appraised at $350,000, and Dan Marcinco was proposing we put close to $300,000 into it, which to me was ridiculous. I agree with Leslie, there are a lot of places for Girl Scouts to meet and Boy Scouts, I believe they meet in this very room as a matter of fact. And I believe the city needs to make a clear decision on what they'd like to do with the building before dropping $30,000 into it. I know it's been discussed to sell. The city's been selling off a lot of our real estate, including our precious little bank that was a historical landmark given to us for $1, that was sold off without much public input. And for the most part, it just does not seem like a wise investment to me. So I understand it's a storage room currently, and it's been used as a gymnasium or a workout facility for city staff. That's not appropriate. It should be used and either rented out and used in a cash flow circumstance, or saved for parking, since we are selling off our parking lot as well for the Segala Winery to be built, and used for the community. I would hope that the city would look into this much further. I've renovated a lot of homes, and I could see the dry rot on the corners, and I wouldn't need a $30,000 expert to tell me what needs to be done to that building. I would suggest if you're going to improve it to sell it, or improve it to use it, that you just focus on that and not waste $30,000 of taxpayer funds, when I see so many other needs, including safety concerns, that our city needs to be paying attention to. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any further discussion, council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Motion carries six, six to one. Sorry, I'm having a hard time counseling without, counting without matter. All right, let's move on to the agenda. Is there any report from Community Development Committee?
No report.
Finance Administration, Local Agency Professional Services Cost Plus Fix D Consultant Agreement. Okay, so I'll read that. All right, the city is...
Where are we at?
Oh, wait a minute, let's back up.
Yeah, we skipped that stoplight thing.
All right, let's back up. I'm sorry, we're not done with Public Works. Sorry, Mr. Councilmember Sunwall. Let's go to Agenda Bill 18033, Resolution 1437, rejecting the bid for the apparent low bidder as non-responsive, determining the lowest responsible responsive bidder, and awarding a public works contract to and authorizing execution of a contract with Titan Earthwork LLC for the Snoqualmie Parkway and Fisher Avenue Hawk Signal Project.
City staff recommend that the city council reject the bid of NPM Construction Company as non-responsive and award a contract for construction of the Snoqualmie Parkway Fisher Avenue Hawk Signal Project to Titan Earthwork LLC. Move to adopt Resolution 1437, rejecting the bid of the apparent low bidder as non-responsive, determining the lowest responsible responsive bidder, and awarding public works contract to and authorizing execution of a contract with Titan Earthwork, Earthwork LLC for the Snoqualmie Parkway Fisher Avenue Hawk Signal Project, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Bill 18027 as stated by Sunwall. Any discussion? I'd like to take a chance at it and then turn it over to our city attorney. Just preface this, tonight, your decision is to award a contract or not an award a contract. It is not to relitigate the hawk or traffic signal, but I will not contain the conversation strictly to that. I would like to point out, though, brief history, that intersection was cited for a signal at the beginning of Snoqualmie Ridge Development. There were subsequent decisions that redistributed the retail and residential distribution and count of units at that time. Snoqualmie Ridge Development came back and advised that the intersection no longer qualified for a signal and actually requested mitigation funds back. In discussions between the city and the developer, it was taken out of as a traffic signal and put to a pedestrian signal, and those mitigation fees commensurate were retained. That's the first time that decision was made. The city also submitted to PSRC, the state, for funding of a signal at that intersection. The request was denied. We resubmitted for a pedestrian signal and were granted the funds you have discussion tonight. That was the second time the decision was made, and that time it was made by the state that that intersection warranted pedestrian versus signal. The city also went through and did an analysis of warrants, these are not in chronological order, analysis of warrants. And based on that analysis, through the Universal Manual of Traffic Control Devices, which is a nationwide standard, that intersection did not warrant a signal, but warranted a pedestrian control device. That was decision number three. I'd also submit to you that the Universal Manual of Traffic Control Devices is there to guide us so that we don't make decisions, I could come forward and say that I want the pavement in my house to look pristine and the rest of the city gravel, and that would go against the Universal Manual of Traffic Control Devices, or the way we maintain. Those things are in place so that those in power or those with the greatest voice do not drive a decision of inequality to the rest of the community at large. Okay? With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sturbank. He can go into greater detail of the history of this intersection and traffic device.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And as council's probably aware, there is a lengthy memo staff report in the packet with exhibits, trying to track what we understood to be the council's direction during the retreat, to give you the context and the history and options considered and so on, and attach the detailed documents, and then save a kind of a more, a briefer presentation. We have, you know, an abbreviated version of the staff report here and a PowerPoint that I can go through. Mayor Protem Holloway just summarized a good chunk of the beginning of it. And Mike Hendricks from Pertite, who is the design engineer and who authored the engineering justification memo that's in the packet, is also there, as well as Brian Coleman. So before I dive in, I'm interested in the council's pleasure of how much all part of none of the staff presentation you'd like to hear.
All of it.
All of it, all right. I will see if I can...
Except the clicker voted no.
There we go. So I think as it's been summarized in the motion, why are we here? We're seeking council approval of a resolution awarding the contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and that in this case is not, was not the apparent low, and so there's a bit of a complication there, which we will get to. Also, to get background and context, address the council questions and return, and concerns. And ultimately, this is a council legislative decision. It's not a quasi-judicial land use decision, so throw out everything in your brain that you picked up during the training for the two hours before the meeting started. Staff are here to provide our best professional recommendation, but at the end of the day, it is a council decision.
Question? Just a quick question, are you able to go back one slide? That award, this top, top bullet point, did that go out for bid as a result of a council authorization, or is that just a staff authorization?
It was a council authorization. I want to say it was January of 2017, when it was authorized to go, to be advertised for bid. There was more than the usual delay in getting it out to bid because of the grant process and the requirement that we get Wash Dock concurrence and sign off on the plans before it actually was advertised for bid. So my understanding is it was actually advertised in November, but council authorized it in January 2017. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'm here for the history and context, the legal issues, the manual, I think as Mayor Protem indicated, manual on uniform traffic control devices is a city code requirement, it's a requirement of state law, and so there are legal issues that intersect with the engineering ones, which is why I'm here for the beginning of this talk. Mike Hendricks from Pertite is here, and then Brian Coleman, Dan Marcinco can speak to the details of the bid process, the bid tabs, and the responsiveness slash responsibility determinations that they make before starting. So this, before we get in, for those who aren't familiar, what is the Hawk Signal? The technical manual term for it is a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Hawk is an acronym, I think that the industry has come up with, high intensity activated crosswalk. This is a quick video, and if our IT friends can get it going.
The pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as the Hawk Signal, normally shows dark indications to vehicular traffic, and a solid signifying "don't walk" to pedestrians. Once the pedestrian pushes the crosswalk button, the Hawk wakes up by displaying flashing yellow to vehicular traffic.
Too far.
I think we need to restart the video.
Pedestrian signal changes to walk. Using caution, the pedestrian may now legally begin crossing. After the walk phase, a flashing "don't walk" phase accompanied by a numerical countdown will begin. Pedestrians may finish crossing if they had already started, but they may not start from the sidewalk. Vehicular traffic sees flashing red. Each vehicle must stop, but then may proceed if safe to do so, without endangering pedestrians or other traffic. At this point, the Hawk Signal reverts back to its default mode of being dark for vehicular traffic and displaying "don't walk" to pedestrians. Should another pedestrian push the button soon after the previous walk phase, there will be a predetermined time to allow vehicular traffic to clear before the sequence starts again.
So that's a memo, or, sorry, memo, that's a video produced by the state of Delaware Department of Transportation. That was their very first Hawk Signal installed at the intersection of State Route 72 and Farm Lane. To the left out of the video is a state agricultural college, which is the generator of the pedestrian traffic that's served by the Hawk. And the posted speed there, you could tell that traffic was pretty quick. You can zoom in on this on your computer and see the speed limit sign in the background. The posted speed is 45 miles an hour, so higher, higher posted speed than the Parkway. So Hawk crosswalks are used in a variety of different treatments, from near schools where there are low speeds to much higher speed arterials like this one. That's why we chose this example. Some questions have been raised, I think, about the flashing red phase of this, which comes near the very end. And one thing that I wanted to address from the legal standpoint is that there, there really isn't any confusion under Washington law about what a flashing red means. The manual says flashing red, you have to stop at the clearly marked stop line, and then the right to proceed after that is the same as after making a stop at a stop sign. In other words, if there's a pedestrian, you have to yield. If it's clear, you can proceed. And cut and paste below the quote at the top is from the manual, but the second quote is from our state statute, RCW 4661065, and you can see it's virtually identical. So the same rules apply in terms of a flashing red. That statute goes on to say railroad crossings are different. When you see a flashing red at a railroad, you have to stop, and you could proceed if it were clear, but not if the gate or arm is down, you're not allowed to drive around it. But in terms of just a straight up flashing red, the manual and our state law are identical. So there should be no driver confusion. And you might think, these are, you know, an occupational hazard is when we work on issues like this, you start to see the, the traffic control devices that you're working on as you drive around. This is a flashing red beacon on my daily route in the morning in Bellevue. It's at a four-way stop. Two, just like on a Hawk, but these are independent flashing red beacons, tell you you have to stop. And there's another one about a half mile away. This is at the intersection of 150th Avenue Southeast and 46th Place. So again, you could see this a little more clearly, the two flashing, flashing red beacons. So it's a common treatment outside of the Hawk Signal as well. Mayor Protem Holloway went through, I'll just kind of show you the details here on the history. The original Snoqualmie Ridge Mick, one, mixed-use final plan contemplated a 34-acre business park at what is the southern terminus of Fisher Avenue, so on the south side of the Parkway, opposite the Ironwood neighborhood. And the transportation study that was part of the environmental impact analysis contemplated that and looked at the number of trips that would come out of the development of that business park, and concluded that that met the warrants for a full signal. And therefore, the original roadway plan for the Parkway contemplated a full traffic signal at the Parkway and Fisher. But a couple of years later, in 2001, there was what we know as the Snoqualmie Preservation Initiative, the multi-party agreement among the city, King County, Warehouse of Real Estate, and Cascade Land Conservancy, that resulted in a lot of the property immediately north of what's now the fire station being preserved, along with a lot of other property on Rattlesnake Ridge and in the headwaters of the Raging River Basin. The trade-off for that, there were two things that Rico Warehouse, Warehouse Real Estate Company wanted. One was the ability to bring SR2 into the city and develop it, which was part of the agreement. And the second was to lift the residential unit cap in SR1 and add 268 more units, and in exchange, get rid of the business park that was at the south of Fisher. And so that came back to the Snoqualmie City Council for an amendment of the SR1 mixed-use final plan. That happened in Resolution Number 596. They amended the map, they amended the land use table to convert the business park designation to residential at 5.5, five and a half dwelling units to 18 dwelling units per acre, and that was labeled parcel W1. And the environmental review that went along with that showed a net reduction in, in vehicle trips, more than 100 PMP peak hour trips. And then that parcel W1 was then developed a year later as what we now know as Woody Creek, with only 92 units. After roadways and critical areas were subtracted, that 268 units became 92. So significantly smaller traffic generation from that than was originally contemplated. Warehouse proceeded, I think, believing that that meant that the traffic signal was not going to be required. Woody Creek was developed and the homes were being built, they were not required as a condition of that plat to install the signal at the Fisher and Parkway intersection. A couple of years later, they were beginning to pursue SR2, and city staff said, wait a minute, there's a list of completion items needed, we think you still need to do the signal. Warehouse disagreed, there was some arm wrestling that resulted in what we refer to colloquially as the completion agreement, the list of things they agreed they were going to do. And to settle the dispute, they said, they, Warehouse, will give you $200,000 towards a traffic signal when you determine it's necessary, at such time as the city determines necessary. So in order to pay for the design, the city triggered that requirement, sent a letter saying, we determine it's necessary, the following year, obtained the money, spent the money on the design. It was designed and went to bid in 2008, the bids came in at 131,000 over the engineer's estimate, and the city council rejected all bids. And as we probably all remember, the recession was just getting underway then, and the project didn't proceed for a bit. The city then turned to King County, asked the county to bring the design plans up to speed a little bit, add the countdown pedestrian heads and some other things. They applied for a grant from the State Transportation Improvement Board. The grant failed miserably, it was scored 35 out of 100, particularly low in the safety category because of the... It was scored 35 out of 100, particularly low in the safety category because of the low number of vehicle trips. TIB staff came out and met with Public Works, and it was at that time that the state informed the city that it didn't meet vehicle warrants, it wasn't going to meet vehicle warrants for, for a signal, given the small size of the developments. And there were $0 going to be awarded for the grant. So approximately six months later, the city changed the scope of the project to what we now refer to as the HAWK, asked the county for construction estimates. Those estimates were included in a subsequent grant application, as Mayor Protam referred to, that was made to the Puget Sound Regional Council, the PSRC. Those are federal funds, but the PSRC is, sorry, more acronyms here. PSRC serves as the Regional Transportation Planning Organization, the RTPO. That's who administers federal grant funds that come out of Washington. So the application goes to PSRC. They put it on standby in 2015 and eventually awarded the city $175,000 in 2016, after which the design was finalized. And as I mentioned before, WashDOT approval obtained, and the project was put to bid. Here we are with the bids. So I'm about, we're getting ready to turn this over to Mike Hendricks to talk about these manual on uniform traffic control device issues. Just let me kind of lead in a little bit and talk about what the manual is. It is a set of engineering standards that by law, the city applies to itself and to developers in the city. There's a section in the city code that says, "Street designs shall comply with the manual." As a matter of federal law, states are required to adopt it. WashDOT has, and there's a set of regulations that they have adopted in the Washington Administrative Code that also mandate that agencies that work with WashDOT comply with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And when WashDOT administers a grant for you, as they are now, a condition of their grant administration contract says, thou shalt comply with our standard specifications, which also have a requirement to comply with MUTCD. So every direction we turn, there are legal requirements that we comply with the manual. How does the manual work? It's got four different kinds of statements, if you will. There are standards, capital S, which are mandatory. There's guidance, which is recommended or advisory, from which deviation is permitted based on engineering judgment or engineering study. There are options, which are exactly what they sound like. And then there's support. And statements of support are explanations or rationale why a standard or a guidance says what it says. So those are the four pieces, and when you consider what, what you have to do under the manual versus what maybe you ought to do, it's important to keep those distinctions in mind. So you've heard some public comment, and you probably will when I'm done. Why not just build a full traffic signal now? You were planning to do one before, you should do one now, the residents prefer that, please build a signal. Doesn't comply with the manual because there are nine individual signal warrants that are contained in a standard, so they're mandatory. And it says, "City shall consider these." And the manual then goes on to say, "A traffic control signal should not be installed unless one or more of the factors, the warrants, are met." The city's had two engineering analysis, which conclude that none of those warrants are met. One was by Farron Peers in 2015, the other by Partite, Mr. Hendricks' group, more recently in December and completed January of this year. The primary driver on those warrants, when you're looking at whether a full signal is, is warranted, is the volume of traffic on the minor legs. And so in, in, in our case, the major intersection legs are the parkway on either side, the minor legs are Fisher. Those small residential developments do not generate enough traffic to trigger the full signal warrants, and that's not likely to change whether you analyze it now or 2015 or 2020, because those develop any bigger, they're fully built out. So that's the, the fundamental issue. So when you think about, well, isn't there more traffic on the parkway today than there was five years ago? And isn't there going to be more traffic on the parkway because of, on the parkway because of the mill site or the sales expansion? That's true. However, those trips are not going to markedly affect the warrant because those trips will be on the major leg, the parkway, and not the minor leg. The one that could change that is the Snoqualmie Heights potential annexation. And you might remember, if you think back to the drawings, there was at least one conceptual design of the annexation area that had a business park and a road connection through to Fisher. And if that comes forward, and if this council or a future council approves that annexation and it's developed, it's likely that there, at that time, that there'll be significant additional traffic and that that would trigger a full signal warrant. If that does happen, we would anticipate that the city would follow the same practice from SR1 and SR2, and that would be to require the developer to bear the cost of putting in the full signal. And the, and to pay for the upgrade. The design that's in front of you tonight as part of this project is such that poles and mast arms and the primary pieces of infrastructure could be reused as part of a signal, full signal treatment. The HAWK signal heads, the red flashers would be taken off, and traditional red, yellow, green would be installed on those, and then the other two legs would be built. But that would be costs that, in that scenario, the city wouldn't be bearing, we would be looking to the developer to bear. And now, if you do think back to Mr. Walters' presentation, talking about exactions or conditions that you can apply, impact fees and so on, to a development, when you can show that the development is, has a nexus, is the generator of the traffic that requires the improvement, the law allows you to place the obligation on them to build the improvement or to pay you the pro-rata share so that you can build it. So what about the pedestrian hybrid beacon or the HAWK? Are there warrants for the HAWK? No. There is a separate section of the manual that addresses pedestrian hybrid beacons, but they don't include warrants under a standard the same way they do for a full traffic signal. And there's a distinction. There's some guidance that talks about, you should think about whether you have enough pedestrian counts to justify spending the money. But there's also a concept under the manual that allows you to look at, are, do you have significant pedestrian generators on either side of your roadway? In the Delaware example, the Agricultural College, that will generate pedestrians if they feel safe enough to cross. And in this case, that approach has been followed in, in other Washington cities, including the city of Pullman, where the engineering report that was generated for that looked at the actual counts, not once but twice, and concluded, well, the pedestrian counts from the manual's guidance aren't met, but, but we know there's a trail here and there's Washington State University nearby that's going to generate enough pedestrians, that's sufficient to, to put in a HAWK. Similar approach was used in, in other cities, and then in Mr. Hendricks' memo, providing the engineering justification for this beacon. There are some other concerns raised about location and over the crosswalk versus the far side of the intersection. And the manual itself says, when you have a high-speed arterial, you put the signals on the far side of the intersection and not directly over the crosswalk. I am, now, we're kind of jumping ahead, and these are things that are really better. I don't know, are you guys doing this? Yeah. Because this isn't working for me. So maybe you can go back a slide or two, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hendricks, so that I don't tread on the engineering stuff. Maybe one after that. And Mike, maybe if you could reduce yourself to turn over a little bit on your history with traffic signals before you dive in.
Great. Thank you. My name is Mike Hendricks. I am a senior engineer with Partite. I work out of our Seattle office, which addresses 505 Fifth Avenue South, Seattle, Washington. Just a little bit about myself. I have over 16 years of experience in the design and analysis of traffic signals and pedestrian crossings in both Washington and Arizona. So, and I've, I've been working, I worked on the HAWK signal that was done recently in the city of Wenatchee at Mission Street in Benton. So just to go ahead and touch upon some other items here that, that Bob has put together, there was a concern about the maximum street slope on which a HAWK could be used. A HAWK signal is very similar to a traffic signal in the sense that there is, is no limitation on the overall grade of a road that a signal should be installed at. However, we do have to compensate for that slope when we do our timing, such as our yellow and all red timing, which is something that would be occur as well as a HAWK signal as with any other, a full traffic signal as well. And then also, there are concern about the Seattle approach versus the MUTCD and the HAWK being retained in the MUTCD. Seattle has elected to use what's called a half signal, which is a standard red, yellow, green indication, very similar to a HAWK signal, and it controls one crosswalk across a intersection. The MUTCD back in 1988, the 1988 version prohibited this in a section talking about the use of stop signs at intersections as well with full traffic signals. The city of Seattle has found experience to continue to use the half signal and has chosen to elect to use that instead of Hawks. I can't speak much about whether or not the HAWK will be retained in the MUTCD. So far, we have not seen any studies or any guidance that has come from Federal Highways Administration or the National Committee on Uniform Traffic Control Devices to go ahead and tell us that this, that this was under consideration for removal on that one there. I could talk a little bit, I'm sure we'll probably talk a little bit about the compliance rates, but there's been a number of studies which has said that the HAWK signal has compliance rates in around the 97 to 99%. What that means is, is that 97 to 99% of motorists who encounter a HAWK stop on the red indication. And this is almost exactly the same as with a half signal. And this was actually, a lot of this research was contained within a report called NCHRP 572. This was a, a major study, I believe it was back in 2008 when that study was conducted. It, it has a lot of guidance on what type of controls to use at uncontrolled marked crosswalks. Don't use this. So for information that, that we obtained for, for the HAWK signal in, in Pullman, that noted that there were two collisions following the installation. So the information that we had was that the HAWK, that the accidents were unrelated to the HAWK signal operation, but were rather involved, as noted here, drivers skidding on ice and the other involving a left turn driver failing to yield to a car already in the lane. So there was no connection to the HAWK signal operation on that. And, and so again, as noted here, the police have reviewed the crashes near the intersection where the HAWK was installed, and report that the HAWK was, was not a factor in any of those collisions. So another concern, very understandable, is the speed on the parkway. When speed studies have been done out here, the, what we call in the engineering world the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed at which 85, 85%, 85% of the motorists are traveling at or below, that was about 48 miles per hour in, I believe, the eastbound direction and 49 miles per hour in the westbound direction. So almost 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. We, it's very critical on this, on this, excuse me, on this speed is because engineers use this to time signals as well as, in some cases, establish speed limits for it. So we like to make sure that our, our designs will accommodate vehicles which are, are traveling at this speed. Because of that, similar to other traffic signals throughout, there are signals on 50 mile per hour roadways. Again, to compensate for this, how we do this is we take care of it by traffic signal timing. So for example, in the case of the parkway, we would see a yellow light indication probably in the four to five second range. And then what we call an all red clearance, which is when the, both red lights would be on and the pedestrian would still see a "don't walk" indication. And so that would be probably a shorter time of about two seconds. And that would allow any vehicle to either clear the intersection, or if it's just about to, if it's past the stop line, to make sure that that vehicle has passed the crosswalk and is not a threat to a crossing pedestrian. So, so a question also about advanced warning signs coming down the parkway. We, also, we looked at the sight distance on this, and this was based again on MUTCD guidance of how far you can see a traffic signal. We use this based on the 50 mile per hour speed, not the 40 mile per hour speed limit because we wanted to compensate. We wanted to ensure that folks who are, although they are traveling above the speed limit, to make sure that the timing was appropriate and we would not be putting pedestrians in a hazardous situation. Also then, there was a question about, should there be a sign facing drivers on Fisher, alerting them that the crosswalk is activated? This is actually something, I actually talked to some old colleagues that I had in Tucson, Arizona, where the pedestrian hybrid beacon or HAWK signal was originated. They, they do not use these indications. And the reason that they don't use this indication is because they do not want to indicate to the side street motorists that it is active, so you can get vehicles which may be ignoring the stop sign and instead entering the intersection, treating it as a quasi-signal. Additionally, I have a quote here from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Traffic Control Device Handbook, which, which states the following. I apologize about my delay here. So, and here, here's a quote from this. "Any dynamic street, side street indication is not recommended. Experience suggests drivers will most likely abuse the dynamic signal's indication and use it as a go indication to push their way into the major street, possibly without adequate regard to others lawfully within the intersection." And in particular, that's about pedestrians who may be crossing the side street, in our case, crossing Fisher along the parkway.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ross.
So it says, are advanced warning signs coming down the parkway needed? So I think what we're asking there is, because it's a new signal, would it have like new traffic signal ahead or traffic control change ahead or any of those signs?
Absolutely, Councilmember Ross. There would be signs saying, I believe, "Traffic control change ahead" as well. And those would be orange, orange signs with black letters on them, and they would probably have flags as well to, to further grab people's attention that something is changing.
So, our mayor Protam isn't here to call me. So, but that, those are temporary, right?
Yes.
I, I think what's actually referred to in this is something that was recently installed on the parkway coming down from Jacobia heading toward the school zone.
Yes.
And, which was a great addition, but there's a fundamental difference between that, that's a blind corner. And you're saying that the sight distance from where, how far people could see the stoplight would not necessitate or govern there being a heads up, there's a, there's a stoplight coming?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly it, and for the exact reasons. So because you're coming almost straightaway in both directions and that, that you could adequately see those, especially with the overhead indications. In addition, our design actually includes indications on the pole shaft as well. So for example, if you are behind a large truck or a bus, oftentimes, sometimes you'll notice on regular traffic signals, you can't see the overhead only indications. This is located on, so our design has a, a side mount as well, so that when you're coming, you can see that additional supplemental indication. And so that was something as well to go ahead and, for the sake of approaching drivers, but also when drivers have stopped and continue on the flashing red, so that it pulls their eyes down to a pedestrian level, so that they can see the pedestrians in the crosswalk, rather than focusing on the overhead indications completely on that. I believe, Brian.
Okay, wait. Couple of follow-on questions.
Absolutely.
Partite is engaged with the city on a number of contracts, and we have gone through qualifications with you numerous times?
Yes.
So you're a qualified city engineer for the city of Snoqualmie?
Yes.
In your estimation, as the city, qualified city engineer for the city of Snoqualmie, what is the best safety solution that meets the warrants for this intersection?
If you were to install a crosswalk across the parkway, you absolutely need to install a, a pedestrian hybrid beacon or a, or a full signal if that was warranted, which we found that was not in this case. That is my professional opinion, yes.
Councilmember Sunwell?
So one other thing, this might be a question for you as well, Bob. But my understanding of state law is that any intersection is a legal crosswalk, right? So whether it's painted or signaled or whatever, right? It is a legal crosswalk as, as would be exhibited in this particular case as well. So I'd actually So, I actually just wanted to make that point, so.
Just to distinguish between a marked and unmarked crosswalks, pedestrians have the right of way.
Okay.
Bob, you need to use the microphone, get John Tate.
But as Mr. Hendricks, I think, was alluding to, if you mark a crosswalk in a situation where you have the speeds that you have, you need to install traffic control for the pedestrians.
Okay.
And the manual is pretty clear, and the...
Right, and this was, yeah, I can speak a little bit, there was a report back in 2004 which evaluated the safety of unmarked crosswalks versus marked crosswalks to establish what is the criteria, what should be the criteria of treatments that are used when a marked crosswalk is placed. And because of the speeds and the traffic volumes along the parkway, what it recommends is to non-install a marked crosswalk unless there are other items included, such as either traffic calming to bring down the speeds, in their intent to bring it down into another category, or a traffic, some sort of, either a traffic control signal or a hawk signal.
Let me ask a question. All right, finish up with this discussion.
Yeah, I just want to clarify on, you mentioned the signal timing.
Yes.
So, you gave a five to six second yellow warning signal identifying that the signal is changing, two to three second delay then before, when it, once it turns red, before the pedestrian crossing turns on. How long is then the duration anticipated in our, in our instance specifically, for the red light to be on to allow someone to safely cross the intersection and how much, and get across if they're walking?
Absolutely. So, we have not done the formal calculations, so I am going to go ahead and give you an approximate value on that, but we will, we can provide the city with that, that traffic, that information. The MUTCD says a minimum of a seven second walk time, however, that is the minimum level. We would recommend enough time for a pedestrian to leave the curb and to get into the opposing direction before the flashing red begins, because what this would do is, it would prevent a situation where you may be stopped on, say, the westbound side and the pedestrian has still not cleared the eastbound side when the flashing red comes on. So then, a driver may, in the far right lane, may not see a crossing pedestrian and have a close call on that one there. So, we would time it so that you can get into probably halfway of the opposing approach. Does that make sense?
No, it doesn't make sense to me, because...
My apologies.
It's okay, I'm trying to get an understanding, because I'm visualizing other pedestrian intersections where people have to walk across the parkway. It's a significant distance, 70, 80 feet, I think, is where we're at. I believe the intersection at Douglas flashes with a countdown for 25 seconds, I believe. So, I'd be concerned, very concerned, if that signal was going off in 15 seconds and you only had enough time to get across halfway of what other intersections provide before the light starts flashing red and cars can then proceed. I would, so I'm having difficulty understanding the logic behind only allowing pedestrians to get halfway across before you let cars start driving.
Halfway across the other. I guess I was not...
Not out of the intersection.
Not, not, not clear on that, and my apologies, Councilmember.
If someone hits the button...
Yes.
And they want to cross the street.
Yes.
As a citizen, let alone a council member, I am concerned primarily about the safety of our citizens. That's the number one thing will be in on part of all my comments and questions. I want to make sure that that pedestrian that hits the button has more than ample time to get all the way across the intersection. I'm not talking about somebody that runs in 10 seconds later or 20 seconds later and tries to, you know, gun it across the road. I'm talking, on foot, obviously, or on a bicycle, or however else they're using the intersection legally. So, I'm trying to get an understanding of what the timing will be in terms of seconds, not in terms of position of the person.
Sure.
Because everybody moves at a different spa, speed.
Yes.
You know, other, some folks may get across there in just 10 or 15 seconds, others may take 25, 30 seconds. I'm concerned about the safety of people crossing.
And so, so the MUTCD standard is 3.5 feet per second as a pedestrian who is crossing on that. So, although we have not done the timing yet for this hawk crossing, the intent would be that a pedestrian would see a walk hand, a walk symbol come on to allow them to cross, for example, if we were coming from the south to the north, in that case, they would be able, the walk signal would be on as they, for the first three lanes heading in the eastbound direction, and then about halfway into the westbound direction before they see a flashing hand come on with the countdown indication. That countdown indication would be timed based on a pedestrian, someone running in at the very last moment, so if they, if they, if they cross from the south to the north at the very last second, the flashing hand would be timed enough that they could get across the roadway at, during the flashing hand as well. And that is the MUTCD standard as well for pedestrian crossing.
Matt, I'm not sure tonight, it's, we don't have a decision on the timing of the lights, we have a decision on letting a contract or not. I think the MU, MUCTD will dictate what the, those who have a profession of doings have determined is appropriate timing.
I'm just looking at, we're very specific on how long the yellow warning light is on and how long the delayed time is, but we don't know how long we're going to do to cross the intersection. I just find that concerning, that we have specifics on some things but not specifics on others. That's what I'm getting at.
Well, just to be a little bit clarifying on that is, these were approximate values at this time, because we have not calculated the exact yellow and red times at this point. So, these are, these are based on approximate, back-of-the-envelope calculations at this point.
So, I'm going to call point of procedure, the timing is not strictly germane to the discussion tonight, so, and it's a part of the design we haven't got into yet.
I have a point of procedure.
Yes?
I have a point of procedure.
Point of procedure, go ahead.
Yeah, it's kind of getting close to nine o'clock, and I'd like to have time for Gary Norris to come up and talk.
Peggy, I can't hear you.
I'd like, I'd like to have time for Gary Norris to come up and talk, it's almost nine o'clock.
I'm, Gary Norris is a member of the public, he will get the same time limit as everybody else in the public, but I do have a question in regards to, just in council in general. As far as engineering questions, are you now satisfied? Do you want to entertain public comments at this stage and then go into discussion, or you want to do discussion and then public comment?
I guess I'm not answering your, I don't know if I'm answering your question, I have a question, an engineering, a question for the engineer.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mania.
Or perhaps my question is for city staff or even the city attorney, I'm not sure. My question is, if this sig, if any signal goes in at this intersection, I'm curious whether, I'm, I'm, I guess my expectation is that the timing of any signal is determined according to engineering recommendations by people who are expert in this area and that that's how we, as a city, determine these sort of things as opposed to, we don't typically vote on them, I assume, in the city council, is that right? I don't know who I'm asking, actually.
Well, we don't get to vote on the power of the UV lights in the water sanitation, in the water system either. Those are engineering design decisions best determined by the professionals in that field.
And that's how, and that's how we would proceed with any signal that would get installed at this intersection. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jeans, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm curious about the proposal. I'm not clear on, of the four crosswalks that are at that intersection, how many crosswalks will be marked?
So, based, based on the plans, we would have one crosswalk across Snoqualmie Parkway. That would be a marked crosswalk, that would be the one that would be controlled by the hawk signal, and that would be on the west leg, across the west leg.
Oh, on the upside?
Exactly.
Hmm. And there would not be marked crosswalks for the Fishers?
Right now, no. Those could be added in the plan there. Most of the time, for both a maintenance perspective, since that location's already controlled by a stop sign, pedestrians can, can cross there as well, it is an unmarked crosswalk as well.
I just want to clarify, the, along the parkway, I believe on both sides...
I believe it's marked.
They're both marked.
They're marked already.
They already have stripes on those. Only...
On the Ironwood side, I apologize. The creek is not marked.
Okay, I apologize, I know that one side is, I drive it, ride it every day and I see it, so.
On the Parkway Trail side, it is marked.
And we are not changing that, so we are not modifying that at all.
All right, so again, that brings us back to a kind of a point of order for us, do we want to go in, do you want to have a discussion now, go into public comment, you want to do public comment and then discussion?
I would like to do public comment. They've been here a while.
Okay, so there's no objections, we'll move on with that.
Thank you.
Did we have a sign-up sheet or not?
Nope.
All right, so, members of the public wishing to make comment on this agenda item before we move into discussion and action? I'll get you next, nope.
Charlene Lewelski, I live at 8818 Norman Avenue, Southeast. I'm concerned for all residents, and before, I know I'm coming in at the 11th hour here, but I did come in once before. I'm sorry, I sat shortly after one of your traffics with, when you put that in the street. And I was sitting at the park, and it's, I thank you for bringing that, because I never knew about how that all went. And what I want to say is, what I learned tonight is that, yes, it's a residential area, but did anybody think that there's a park there now? That is a very nice park. I sat in that park and watched the people, okay? You can talk about pedestrians, we're not talking about adults. The adults that are crossing there are, have baby carriages, or they're walking with little kids that are two and three years old, or there are kids that are, I would say, based on my grandchildren's age, nine or 10, maybe 11 years old. When I watched, when they did the, one of the studies, you had a flashing light that was stopping, that was controlling the traffic and telling it to lower the speed. And that light did lower your, your speed, I could see the car lights stop, trying to stop the back traffic lights. In fact, Mr. Larson, when I told him that, our mayor, he said, "Well, thank you for watching." So, just recently, we had a nice sunny day, and I went and sat at the park again. I wish before you would make this decision, I know that your signal, your studies are telling you that the traffic doesn't warrant it, but your pedestrians that are there warrant it. There are, it's all children, and it only takes one, it only takes one, and then is it all going to be worth it? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Leslie, did you have your? I'm trying to, you'll be next?
Leslie Shepard, 71, 7516 Snowberry Avenue. I'm going to comment first and thank Peggy Shepard, who went above and beyond, doing a whole lot of research, actually visiting hawk signals that are here in the area in King County, above and beyond. Thank you, Peggy. I want to first go on Bob Sturbank's comment that no full signal was warranted at the intersection of Fisher. So, I would like an explanation why a full signal was then placed at Better Way when that also, from my understanding and my reading, was not warranted. I get it that there's a fire station there, but we have school buses, a public bus, and a park across the way. I would, I believe, from what I understand, it is a fact, the city can indeed build a full signal if they want to, even if the warrants aren't all fully there, if they deem it necessary. You will not qualify for a grant, I get that, but I really hope that this does not come down to money, which it sure seems like it is. Another fact is that in all of our research, we didn't find a single hawk crosswalk that was built on a road with a steep grade. I get it that maybe you can, as the engineer said, but it doesn't exist. Also, the hawk crosswalks that we visited were in speed-controlled zones around schools, and I understand that there are hawks that have higher speeds as was demonstrated before. But again, there is no hawk crosswalk with a high speed, a curve, really bad weather, and, or whatever, the specifics for the Fisher and Snoqualmie intersection. So, to me, it seems like we come down to three options, because I was told that, well, the city will have liability if we install a traffic light. Okay, here's from my perspective. If I or my kids get hit and nothing's done, that's a lawsuit. If there's a hawk crosswalk with its problems and someone gets hit, that's a lawsuit. But if you put a full signal that protects both drivers and pedestrians, that's an unfortunate accident.
Lady in the back.
Hi, I'm Susan Groukod, and I'm 34630 Kinsey Street, and my sister lives on Fisher. And going through that intersection is, I'd like to just take into consideration the width of the intersection. You've got two lanes going each way, when you get to the intersection, it becomes three lanes, because you've got two lanes going each way, then you've got the turn lanes. And if you're coming out of Fisher, you look up for the traffic, you got all this traffic coming towards you, but you got this traffic coming down the hill. The traffic coming down the hill is more of a concern to me when I have to turn left to come down into Snoqualmie from her house. You get yourself out into the intersection and you're looking back and forth, but you got to remember, like she said, there's parks, and there's kids, and the kids and dogs sometimes will get away from the parents, or a jogger will be coming or something, you know. But you get out there and you're in the middle of the intersection, you think, oh, God, just, okay, there's no traffic, I'm okay, the traffic's far enough back there, I can go, or do I have to stop and get stuck in the intersection? And then when I'm going to her house down the parkway and have to make my left-hand turn, I see a car over there trying to come out of the neighborhood, a car's over here coming out, and I've got a car in the turn lane to go that way. I'm in the turn lane, I'm stuck, I can't see the inside lane coming towards me. So, I'm stuck, and I feel like these people are thinking, "Why don't you go?" But I, there, if there's a motorcycle or a car, I have to wait until I can, you know, you can see past the cars, so you see there's no traffic back there. So, I have to wait a few moments to get, to make sure there's nothing behind that car. So, that's all I want you to take into consideration, is the width of it, and like she said, the park and the people. And then you have the, as you're turning, you have to remember the crosswalkers, because you got joggers, and sometimes they might bend down to tie their shoe, and then all of a sudden, they're running again, and they're at the, at the intersection, at the crosswalk, and, oh my gosh, I didn't know you were there already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you start the timer, I'd just like to clarify something.
Monica, hang on a second. I do request that, these are all good comments and good feedback, but I ask you to refrain from the clapping. We've got a big agenda item, I'd like to get through the discussions that we have.
Could we please have more than two minutes? Because they took close to 30 for their presentation, these residents have been waiting here a very long time. May we have three minutes, please, Mayor Potem?
I'm going to hold to the two minute, this is city staff, they are not restricted to the same time limit as public comment.
What about the Gary with Dan Traffic, who is a traffic expert here to...
You have two minutes.
Okay.
Tell me when you want to start.
I don't want to start yet, I just want to let you know, I will be exercising what is in our city code, which was, which allows citizens to give me their two minutes, so I will be taking more than two. Basically, what I, as many of you know, I have been working on this issue for several years.
I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor Potem. So, if she's going to take two minutes for, we need to understand how many people she's taking two minutes for?
There's nothing listed in the current code.
You're taking two minutes from citizens, we want to know who they are.
It depends on who they...
Hold on, Monica, the council procedures specifically state, and we can show you those that were reviewed in the retreat we went through, that the chairman of the council or the committee can determine how to allocate time for public comment.
But it also states four minutes should be...
So, we are not violating city code.
You are, if you do not allow citizens to pass minutes.
You have two minutes.
This is ridiculous, this is why citizens are so unhappy with their leadership. This is ridiculous. This is why citizens are so unhappy with their leadership. Yeah, why won't you let residents speak? All we want is our time to speak. You've got to let it go, Brian. It's okay. Matt's not here, he's in Beijing enjoying the Olympics. Just let us have our space. Okay, so, many flaws with what was just presented and?
Stop, please. Did I mistake legal code?
It's not a part of the city code.
It's not part of the city code, it's part of council procedures.
It is. And the, and the chair, and the Mayor Protam is the chair this evening, has the authority under the rules to allocate how much time. The speaker does not get to commandeer the microphone for however she wishes. It's up to the chair.
I would just let this one go. This is a big issue, Brian, you know it. And there's more than two minutes of words to be said. I'll make it quick.
There's more than you tonight, Monica.
Four minutes. I will talk really fast. Let me just start. Sean, please refrain.
This is not your meeting.
Oh, it isn't?
It is not your meeting.
I thought it was a citizen.
Okay.
I've sat, I've been here since 4:30 this afternoon.
We have given several members of the public two minutes. I don't understand why we would change it for one.
Because they're giving up their minutes for me and I've been spearheading this issue for years, Sean. And you and I have gone back and forth in many, many emails, and you know that I have more knowledge about this.
We're not in the middle of campaigning.
Okay, can, I'm not campaigning. I'd like to have my say. Wow. I mean, can I just have four minutes? That's all I'm asking for. That is what council members?
Please let me run the meeting. Hang on. Please give me the show of hands again. How many people are wishing to speak tonight? That was not the question, ladies and gentlemen. How many of you had the intent to speak tonight? So I got one, two, three, four, five, six. How many of you are willing to give your time up to Monica?
Wow. I could have been halfway through my presentation.
Yeah, I got more people putting their hands up for giving time than actually gave their times up.
You'll get the form email from the mayor that he's sending to everyone. It's about two sentences.
Okay.
Can I please speak?
Monica, you have three minutes. I trust those who said they were giving their time up to adhere to giving that time up. If I get further disruption, I will take the meeting into recess. I'm sorry, I'm getting a failing grade from my parliamentarian and I'm trying to recover, guys. All right, I'm not used to this. Three minutes, Monica.
Okay, so, the city has to do a new traffic study. Mike with Partite did an excellent job in his presentation tonight. Unfortunately, everything he's said is null and void because he has used data from a 2015 traffic study. And in the industry, as Mike knows, one year is the maximum you can go for data. So it's unfortunate that the city is refusing, which I have requested many, many times. Please do another traffic study. Please warrant that putting in a hawk will be safe. Just a little history, 12 years ago, our city signed a contract with Quadrant. That makes this a land use issue, by the way, Mr. Sterbank. And they accepted $205,000 to install a traffic signal. Yes, the city changed its mind and rezoned Woody Creek, but that's not the responsibility of citizens. Our responsibility is to keep our families safe. And unfortunately, there are vested right doctrine issues and finding the facts that have not been obtained by our city because failure to do a traffic survey. Once again, 27-month-old data is not relevant. I'm sorry. Gary, who's here, I will be introducing him later, he's an expert, 45 years of experience in the field, has informed me that traffic has already gone up 12% in the past two years. We also have the common sense doctrine, which is what every engineer should apply to their work standards. And based on what all of the residents here and the dozens of emails you all have received in the past week have stated, they feel very unsafe. Over the years, you've received a petition with 219 signatures begging for a four-way traffic signal with four crosswalks, like every other intersection on the Snoqualmie Parkway. Not a hawk signal. The hawk was never even brought into the picture until Dan Marcinco tried to get a grant for a four-way signal and failed two or three times, then threw it out for a hawk, failed the first time, but the second time misrepresented the petition, residents saying, "We wanted a hawk," when that's never what they were asking for. And bingo, he got a grant. So all of a sudden, we're getting a hot crosswalk. This is obviously not going to meet the needs for pedestrian vehicular traffic. I have a letter from our Bob Larson city administrator right here that's 10 years old, demanding that Quadrant install a four-way traffic signal with four crosswalks for vehicular and pedestrian safety. Why that suddenly went out the window, I don't know. The only thing I could assume is the $205,000 the city accepted on October 31st, 10 years ago, was mismanaged and they're looking for a cheap fix. But it will not fix the situation. We have several documents where residents have explained they are not feeling safe, there's poor visibility. We need signage on the parkway, which Matt Larson pulled last year from the budget and so did Bob Larson. We need to definitely have four crosswalks because I almost hit our own city administrator last week coming out of Fisher Avenue and he flew down the parkway. So, I just have to say one more thing, based on the quasi-judicial training I just attended and the fact that in 2015, our city council voted to go with a hot crosswalk without putting it on as an agenda item, I'm going to be asking both Brian Holloway and Bob Jeans to step down from voting tonight because I do believe they have definitely broken several appearance of fairness doctrines in issues regarding land use, which, in my view, this is a land use issue. And I'm also going to ask Sean Sunwal to step down from voting because he's been very biased, very inaccurate, has sent multiple emails out to residents with information that was inappropriate, not true. And he is basically not able to give a neutral opinion. So I'm hoping that we could stick with that tonight. So if you choose to not step down, I'm trying to protect you. If you choose not to step down and vote, it is your choice.
Done.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you for my three minutes, yay!
I do, I do want to, yeah, once again, you're not helping my grade, folks. I do ask you to refrain from clapping so we can get through a lot of this. I do want to remind you, you do have the right, for your speak, you also have the right that the elected officials get their jobs done. I ask that you wait to be recognized. You come to the podium, you state your name and address for the record. You deliver your comments in an efficient and courteous manner. Monica, I don't believe you covered courteous. Avoid comments that are unduly repetitious or do not, are not relevant to the city business. Address the council administration as a whole. Do not single out individuals. The council will only listen to your comments. Please do not be offended if we do not respond. But we will get into discussion post-public comments. Okay? All right, who else was wanting to be up? Sir?
Richard Shields, 6701 West Crestview Loop, Southeast. I just have two very brief points. One is occasionally people are mentioning liability. I would point out that if we do go ahead with the hawk signal, if anyone is ever injured or killed, their attorney suing the city will have armloads of stuff that everyone has brought to the city saying, "We warned you, this is not safe." The other piece I'd like to mention is, the question before you tonight is not hawk signal or versus other alternatives. It is approve the contract or not. But you can, if you have doubts about the hawk signal being appropriate, you can vote no on the contract and there's nothing that causes a problem. You can then, you know, take time to then address issues about whether the hawk signal is appropriate or not. So I would just like to remind you, if you have doubts in your mind, especially depending on how much time you've had to read the very voluminous amounts of information that, on such controversial issue. If you have any doubts in mind, you may want to give yourself some more time to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you give up your time to Monica?
I did not. I got one minute.
Monica?
You got one minute.
I will ask a question.
Be fair.
I am being fair. I am asking a question. Go ahead. You have your two minutes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Ashish Kala, 36511 Southeast Woody Creek Lane. Council members, I came here and I really hope that we do not make this trade-off on the extent of the safety of our children and our residents. I just moved to Snoqualmie in November and the common sense, I missed Woody Creek Lane, Fisher Creek Avenue when I was coming down the first time. There would be many first, such drivers who will not be able to see that sign. We have a major park in that area. It's not a numbers game, it's a safety game. Children will be using that park. People will be coming on, parking their cars, taking their kids for a ride. And you know what? Those kids probably don't live in that neighborhood, so you cannot count those residents as being local. But nevertheless, they will be there. It is also a safety concern for people who are taking the left turns. I go to Seattle every morning. In foggy mornings, I cannot see people coming on downhill when I have to take a left turn. It's a safety, hawk sign does not prevent us, it doesn't allocate for a motorist to go left. This is a big thing that we missed, all of us, here. So it's not just for the pedestrians, it's also for the motorist. I am not a US citizen. I could choose to be home, but I came here as a cemeteryan to voice this for our fellow residents. This is a safety issue that we must all concern, especially when we have $30,000 to attribute to a decaying library that no longer use. So I really hope that this council here take priorities into account and take an effort of, consider the effort of a resident like myself who do not have the voting rights, but still am here to voice my concern for everyone, including you and your children. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Who else wanted to come before?
Good evening. My name is Gary Norris. I'm a senior engineer with DN Traffic Engineering. We are based in Preston, Washington, and I've lived in the valley for 42 years. And I have 45 years of experience as a practicing traffic engineer, including time in Seattle, Bellevue, and 10 years as a city rent and traffic engineer. Oh, sorry, thank you. I've been engaged in this conversation with the city staff and the city attorney and the residents over the last probably month and a half, two months, in a lengthy email exchange. And as I came to understand, by the way, I want you to know, I'm not retained by anybody here in this discussion. I'm here on my own time, offering this. The more I came to review the evaluation, it appeared to me that there were several issues here that needed to be addressed before you moved ahead with a decision. There's a number of false pieces of information that have been put out. But neither approach has benefited from a recent and current traffic study of the items that were identified in the manual and uniform traffic control devices as being required for the determination of whether a traffic signal or a hawk signal should be employed. A hawk signal does have a recommended guideline of 20 pedestrians per hour crossing the crosswalk. The current study done in 2015 indicated there were three. We did a study last summer as part of the Mill Pond project and found there were eight crossing the crosswalk on that leg of the intersection. The full traffic signal, well, there was a lot of history here about warrant analysis that had been done. But our findings in a recent study found volumes on the, on the parkway have gone up by 12% during the last two years. I think you've got here, the main issue we're trying to deal with, as Councilmember Losi said, was safety. And my experience, I'm a member of the, my time up?
Please conclude your comments, but go ahead and shut that off. Please conclude your comments.
So, the, the condition that the, the city was saying that the warrants were a mandate, they're not a mandate. What is a mandate is that a study be done to evaluate the warrants. And the, and the study has to consider the factors identified in the warrants, but it's not a mandate that, that you have to install or not install if it doesn't meet those warrants. And I'm sure Mr. Hendricks would agree with me. He has been involved in a number of situations where councils have adopted a traffic signal installation, a full-fledged traffic signal installation, when it was not, did not meet the warrants. So I think that's a worthy consideration for you in trying to deal with the issues of the community as a whole. And I'm very familiar with the situation on the parkway, having done a lot of studies there. Plus, I drive here every morning on my way to Starbucks. So I think it's worthwhile to have the consideration.
Okay, sir?
Yes.
Please conclude your comments.
Okay. The other thing, the design of the hawk, as you would all agree with me, if you come up to an intersection, I believe you want to see what's going on at that intersection if you're going to enter it, don't you? Is there anybody who disagrees with that? So to provide an indication of that for the people on Fisher, if you proceed with the hawk, it's only normal that that be done. Two quick points.
Sir, sir, I, two quick points.
Two quick points.
And then we're done.
Okay. I wanted to say that the PSRC does not approve projects based on evaluation of warrants. That's up to the agency to do. The PSRC does not do that. So if they rejected your quest, it wasn't because it didn't meet warrants. Secondly, the, the question about the consideration of a hawk signal, state law, that we talked a lot about flashing indications and yellow and red indications. State law also mandates that on a blank signal, as you all should be aware, on a blank signal, when the power goes out, you're required to stop at that blank signal, right? And that's the same thing as part of the question of the hawk signal, is the presentation of a blank signal. How is a motorist supposed to respond to that?
Thank you. Okay. Others wishing? You're cheating. I will let you go. You have two minutes. You were the last one. I'm being, I'm failing now.
Thank you, and good evening. I sent you all an email, January 27th.
Who are you? Yeah, I need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Christina Fricki, 36425 Southeast Isley Street. One of the first residents of Ironwood. Was promised a stoplight at that intersection when we moved in and, what, 15 years later? No, not even a light, not even a crosswalk, not even a, any type of sign that says, "Please slow down, there might be pedestrians." Nothing. I just want a stoplight. I want some type of a sign that says, "Please slow down." We have those big dump trucks, those hurling down the parkway. We have those logging trucks, I hear them every morning. I have three grandchildren, we go to the park now, hurry, run! And we are holding hands and we go to the middle of the intersection. Okay, run! Let's go! And then we have to go to another intersection. That's, that's just not, that's not feasible. I just, I'm concerned for everybody's safety, mine too. Because when I come home from work, I'm coming down, I go 40, maybe 45. And if I see people passing me, I'm flashing my lights like, damn it, slow down! I just get so angry. I'm angry right now just because of this whole situation. But I would hope that you guys consider, I really do, for all of our residents. And it'll make the cars slow down. I, you know, I don't know, it's common sense. People go 50 miles an hour, 60 miles an hour. It's a 40 mile hour zone. So thanks for your time and I have 16 minutes left.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody want to speak for 15 seconds?
I will.
Monica, your time is up. Other individuals wishing to make comment before we move on to discussion? All right, council, I'll turn it back to you for discussion. Monica, or Peggy, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to add a video.
Is it possible, PJ?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Monica has made, Monica has a video she would like to add, or, sorry. I've been talking to Monica so much today. Peggy has, has made a motion, she has a video she would like to add, add to the agenda bill. Is there a second? Okay.
I'll second.
Huh?
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. Hey, council, then I need your decision. Do you want to add the agenda, you want discussion before? Go ahead, Councilman, Councilman Jeans?
So Peggy, I'm curious just about what it's about. What, what new information it might offer to us?
The video is about Tucson, Arizona, and the experience of a hawk crosswalk and how they're having trouble with it.
not inclined to hear how other states do, because this, this presentation will only give whatever the point is that they're going to make, but we don't get any kind of perspective as to what the law is and what the situation is, how it's distinguishable for this thing. So I, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Okay. Councilmember Maye, you?
I had the same question. I just wanted to know what it was about. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Lussay?
You know, Peggy, I certainly would have welcomed seeing this video as part of our, just either as a, as a public comment or something submitted in that sense, but Councilmember Jeans is correct, it's really not relevant to our, our job tonight is to decide whether we award a contract or not award a contract. And, and I have to go along with it, we've got to stick to, stick to the rules of, of what we're here to do, and, and so I, as much as it would've been nice to see it beforehand, unfortunately, I don't think it's the appropriate time.
Further discussion? If not, I ask for a vote. All those in favor of adding it to the agenda bill?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
So we'll take it off. Back to the original motion. Further discussion in regards to contract awarding of the hawk signal? Go ahead, Peggy.
Are we going to have a chance to discuss this?
That's...
Right now.
Right now. That's, I'm asking, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry if I misled, but that was the intent now, was to have discussion. So did you have something you wanted to bring up to the discussion?
Yes.
Okay. You have the floor.
All right. So I've been doing a lot of research, and what I've found out is, experts nationwide are conflicted about the safety of hawk crosswalks. To be clear, what we are referring to as a hawk signal is officially known as a pedestrian hybrid beacon, PHB. I'll refer to it as a hawk beacon. First expert conflict, and I'm going to be paraphrasing here, the background, the MUTCD, Manual Ununiform Traffic Control Devices, are regulations that Snoqualmie is required to conform to. One MUTCD guidance says, a hawk beacon should not be within one hundred feet from side streets with a stop sign. MUTCD says, guidance statements require engineering study that indicates that the deviation is appropriate. This project is planning to be within a hundred feet of a stop sign. We have two different engineering opinions. We have Mike Hendricks, PEPTOE, Professional Traffic Operations Engineer, with eighteen years of experience, certified that the hawk beacon at Snoqualmie Parkway and Fisher Avenue is appropriate. Gary Norris, PEPTOE, forty-five years of experience, says, his concern about this project is the failure to conduct the necessary studies to indicate the hawk or even a four-way traffic signal is warranted at this location. I can't, he says, I can't tell you if a four-way signal is warranted, but I can tell you that a hawk signal is not warranted, based on the information provided. Mr. Sterbank had led me to believe the PRTIT study had been done with the same due diligence we applied in the Pullman case. In review of the PRTIT study documentation, I did not find that to be true. He says, again, it would be my recommendation that no action be taken until the appropriate documentation and analysis be prepared. Second expert conflict, again, I'm paraphrasing, Dong Ho Chang, PEPTOE, City Traffic Engineer for the City of Seattle's Department of Transportation, twenty-five years' experience, says that Seattle has no hawk signals and will not install a hawk signal. Dong Ho serves on the National Committee for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, NCUTCD, which helps write the MUTCD. At their meeting in January twenty-eighteen, there was a lot of controversy on the hawk beacon. According to Dong Ho, there's a lot of confusion as far as how people are supposed to react to the hawk beacon. The indication where the hawk beacon goes from a solid red to a flashing alternating red is the same display that is shown for a railroad crossing. This concern will probably take this device out of commission in the next couple of years. Dong Ho says, we have lots of railroad crossings that have the same indication where a flashing red means that you're supposed to stop and remain stopped until it's dark again after the train has passed. Whereas, the beacon, when it's flashing, you can proceed through the intersection, and that is a very dangerous message that is not uniform, is not consistent. There'll be a conditioning now, as these devices get put in, that people will misinterpret at railroad crossings and then have a very severe consequence. Dong Ho related this to his ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, Safety Meeting.
Peggy, point of order, though, I, how much more?
Is there a time limit?
No, but we're approaching subjects which may or may not be germane, and just, I want to give other council members time to have a discussion, too. Please, go ahead, but be equitable to your council, other council members.
Dong Ho says that this device will be just like some of the other devices that were being deployed without thinking about the consequences long term. City of Seattle uses pedestrian signals that look like a regular signal. These signals are very well-understood and have almost fifty years of safety record in Seattle. These, these signals are primarily used at school crossing locations in Seattle, twenty miles per hour. Third expert conflict, again paraphrasing, at the January twenty-eighteen, ITE Transportation Safety Council meeting, hawk beacon concerns were discussed with a request to take them out of commission. Shawna Hallmark, CCE, Civil Construction and Environmental Engineering Chair for the ITE Transportation Safety Council, confirmed that at the ITE Transportation Safety Council meeting in January twenty-eighteen, they discussed concerns regarding the hawk beacon. She stated, they did not come to any conclusions yet. Hawk crosswalks at intersections are rare in King County. Seattle doesn't have any hawk crosswalks and won't install them. I wanted to go to an existing hawk signal at a similar intersection at Snoqualmie Parkway and Fisher Avenue and asked for locations of hawk signals in King County that were similar, particularly the speed. Three King County locations were provided, however, none were comparable to all parameters of Snoqualmie Parkway and Fisher, which is four lanes, forty miles per hour, and intersection with a side street that has a stop sign near young children. Locations were in school zones with a speed zone of twenty miles per hour. One in Auburn, in front of an elementary school, one lane going each way, the side street ends at the primary street, not four lanes or a through side street. Two in Renton, near a high school, the primary street has two lanes going each way, young children. In twenty-eleven, the NCUTCD recommended to remove the guidance that beacons be installed at least one hundred feet from side streets with a stop sign. In the background, the MUTCD belongs to the Federal Highway Administration. The NCUTCD is a voluntary advisory group without formal recognition by FHWA, but very well-regarded. The NCUTCD made their recommendations in twenty-eleven, and it has not been adopted into the MUTCD, and there is no guarantee it will. At the top of their recommendation, it states, no proposed revision to the MUTCD is effective unless and until approved by FHWA.
So Peggy, so, hang on. So, as council, I would like to make a motion of non-germane. The evolution of the MUTCD is not of discussion tonight.
We've already discussed that.
I second that.
We've already discussed it tonight.
We have discussed the MCT and its applicability to the design here, we have not just discussed the evolution or the intended evolution of the MCT. We are taking it as a static document at time of design. Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second. Is there a discussion?
Peggy, how much more time do you have to? Mayor Protem, can I ask, can you ask how much more time we have available? How much more time does she need to have?
How much more time do you need, Peggy?
Five minutes.
Is the council willing to entertain five minutes?
I'm comfortable with letting her continue for five minutes.
Okay. Proceed on. Well, wait, back, just hold on a second. So based on the council decision, I will withdraw my motion at this time, and we will, huh? If there is no objection. My report card's going to be miserable. And we will proceed on for five more minutes, Peggy, please, go on.
The studies to support NCUTCD's recommendation is based on twenty-one hawk beacons at intersections in Tucson, Arizona. The study does not provide crash data by parameter set such as four-lane road with, that is forty miles an hour. The study does not include names of the cross streets studied, if any were one-way streets, et cetera. In looking for hawk beacons on YouTube, the Google Maps Satellite View to look at intersection surroundings, there weren't any that I found similar. For instance, in Renton, there were two lanes going each way, but the kids were high schoolers. The speed was dropped to twenty miles per hour when the kids, when the kids would be using the crosswalks. Generally, when young kids were around a cross, hawk crosswalk, the speed was much slower. Hawk crosswalks where roads were forty miles per hour, there were, they were not near an attraction for young kids like a playground. To put a hawk beacon at Snoqualmie Parkway and Fisher would be an experiment, and I do not want to subject our city to an unproven device with these parameters. Besides not finding another hawk crosswalk with the speed, proximity to children, number of lanes, there's also the seven-point-five percent slope on Snoqualmie Parkway between Fairway and Fisher, vehicles traveling at forty miles per hour at the crest of that slope heading downhill towards Fisher. If they don't press the accelerator or brakes, they're likely going to be at least sixty miles per hour by the time they reach Fisher. Also, the green space between the lanes with trees obscures visibility. I have received email from at least twenty people, all in favor of not moving forward with this hawk crosswalk. Paraphrased excerpts from, to, from a resident, "I have lived in the Ironwood Development for thirteen years. Over the past two to three months, I have personally witnessed a cyclist speeding down the sidewalk on Ironwood side of the parkway without stopping or even slowing at the intersection corner. Visibility is bad, existing, exiting my neighborhood, and I couldn't see the cyclist until the bike and body whizzed by the hood of my car as I approached the stop sign. I barely braked in time to avoid missing him. It was time of the encounter, not my safe driving, that avoided the impact." That situation will not be solved by the hawk crosswalk. Another situation, the intersection is a high school bus stop. This alone should be enough to warrant four crosswalks. The traffic signal at this intersection, two weeks ago, I was traveling down Snoqualmie Parkway and waited in the left turn lane at Fisher for a school bus who stopped and had its stop sign flag displayed. The children proceeded to walk four different directions when they exited the school bus. As the bus started to accelerate in the far-right lane going up the parkway, an impatient teen driver and a white pickup truck sped through the intersection in the left lane where children were waiting on the corner to cross the street. The driver had no visibility as the school bus was blocking the intersection view." So also found that vehicle speed and pedestrian injury, the pedestrian fatality percentage is, if you're going forty miles per hour, then you have a eighty percent chance, uh-oh, what is it? Fatal injuries is more likely if you're hit at forty miles per hour versus if you're going twenty miles per hour, it's a lot lower. March nineteenth, in Tucson, Arizona, there were nine pedestrian deaths. As of March nineteenth, twenty-thirteen, not a driver and pedestrian in attention. The fine for running is solid red.
Point of order. I don't think this is germane to the discussion of approving a contract for, for the, the intersection.
All right, and I'll sustain the objection, plus I think we did the five minutes.
I'm done.
That was the mutual commitment.
All right.
Catherine, I had a commitment to you for a break. Are you hot? Doing okay?
I'm fine.
I'm fine. Other than that, it's quarter two, so I would like to entertain a motion to probably extend past ten o'clock.
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I'll do nay, just because I don't want to, but we'll go on. All right. Other members of the council wishing to contribute to the discussion? I guess I would like, I'll address at least a couple of comments. Despite, despite training, this is not a quasi-judicial action. This is a contract action, award or no award. As such, it is not quasi-judicial. There is no requirement for, for escorting ourselves out or whatever from that, okay? Excusing ourselves. If, recusing ourselves from the discussion, unless there is another outside conflict of interest. So that statement is incorrect. Further, I would like, I guess personally, I have extreme frustration for disrespect of the council, particularly for those who truly participate, try to participate in the process. If you're going to participate, join us in the process. Don't be disrespectful, please. It's very frustrating. I'll just leave it at that. All right. Councilmember Jeans?
I'm not clear why Monica says that I should be recused from voting, other than it's a quasi-judicial, which I agree with, Brian, it's not quasi-judicial. But why don't you restate your reason why you're asking two of us to recuse ourselves from voting?
Point of order, Bob.
I'm sorry.
I am not, opening up for a public comment again. We've had public comment.
Well, I mean, I have to decide whether I'm going to vote or not vote, and I, and maybe, maybe Bob Sterbank can help.
Sure. As...
Monica, I don't want to talk to you.
Please, Bob, ask your question again and ask it to Mr. Sterbank.
As I understood the comments, the allegation was that this is a land use decision, that therefore it's land use, it's quasi-judicial, and that therefore the appearance of fairness doctrine applies. And each one of those, and that based on the appearance of fairness, there was some allegation about bias on your part that was unspecified. But each of the premises of that statement is wrong, are wrong, no, each is wrong. It's not a land use decision. A land use decision is defined by state statute in thirty-six seventy C O two oh, and it's decision, it's a final determination on an application for a project permit or government approval about, involved with developing real property. That is not this. It's not a land use decision, it's not quasi-judicial. Quasi-judicial is something that judges typically do. Awarding of contracts is not something judges typically do, it's a legislative decision made by local legislative bodies. And so therefore, the appearance of fairness doctrine doesn't apply either, because the statute makes very clear that that doctrine only applies to quasi-judicial decisions and not to legislative ones. So I don't see any, absent some other allegation about involvement with a contractor where the, the contract is to the direct benefit, monetary benefit of a council member. I haven't heard those allegations. There's no basis for the demand for recusal that I heard in public comment.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If you and I were shareholders of the company involved, we'd have to recuse ourselves. That is not the case here tonight. All right, I'm, okay. Councilmember Lussay?
I want to ask a couple of questions regarding the contract and the initiation of that, of such contract. Obviously, there's been discussion of whether the traffic study is...
Okay, if you and I were shareholders of the company involved, we'd have to recuse ourselves. That is not the case here tonight. All right, I'm, okay, Councilmember Lussay?
Um, I wanna ask a couple of questions regarding the contract and the initiation of that, of such contract. Obviously, there's been discussion of whether the traffic study is, uh, the traffic study carries forward. My experience in the construction world as an architect is that it's not uncommon for a traffic study to be, to be older and then have an amendment letter added to it. I'd like to ask, uh, Partit, if that's, if that is what is, you know, one, who prepared the initial traffic study, and two, are they, in essence, extending the traffic study validation by, um, by amendment, amendment letter?
Yeah. I consider them extended to staff, so if the council's okay, please respond.
Uh, so, we took the traffic volumes which were collected in 2015, as noted, which was originally collected by the Fair and Peers study. So, and we used that data at the time. Uh, that was the data that we had, so.
Okay, and did you do any additional, uh, analysis that, and amend that study with any sort of amendment letter or any sort of, uh, engineering, uh, study that, that you put, you know, that Partit stands behind?
Right, we, we, this is a freestanding, a freestanding report based on the 2015 data, which was, which was collected for part of the Fair and Peer study as well. And so, we did an independent analysis, which ended up verifying what Fair and Peers had come up with.
And that independent analysis is what's provided in our agenda packet, then?
Correct. Just to let you know as well, we did also obtain collision data, uh, following that information, which also still indicated that the crash warrant was still not, wasn't still not met as well. So, and we could provide that information to council if desired.
Councilmember Lussay, to, to your question, I think Mr. Hendricks does have an opinion about the length of time that traffic data may be relied on.
Yeah, I'd like to hear that opinion.
Absolutely. So, traffic data is a very, we, we looked through to find a industry standard on that. It is very sub to the locations as well. So, for example, in a area where it's not, there's not a lot of growth, a, a traffic study could, a traffic count could be, could be old and still be valid. For rapidly growing areas, that's different in the sense that you'd like to have as much recent data as possible. In the case of Fisher, of Fisher and Snoqualmie, um, how we looked at it was the side streets have been fully built out for some time. Uh, in addition, I've got some numbers here. The minimum warrants, the volumes on the side streets which need to be met for warrant one, condition A, is 84 vehicles for eight hours. The highest side street volume was 56 vehicles per hour. This was a summary of the through, left, and right turning traffic. Typically, for example, with the state, what they often do is have you remove the right turn volumes because those volumes are expected to stop and find a gap more easily than your through and left volumes. So, even using this 56 vehicles was a very liberal approach. It is not, um, it is not a violation of the M U T C D, but it is a consideration that was, that was looked at here. So, we leaned as well on that, and it still was not met. Their, uh, condition B of that same warrant has a threshold of 42 vehicles, and that was only met during two of the hours, so it did not meet the eight-hour requirement as well.
You're good. Council Ross?
Mr. Hendricks, um, so it sounds like, so we're approved for a Hawk signal, yet we have cars, even if it's 56 an hour or whatever, that are trying to get out into the, into the Parkway. So, what about the timing of the Better Way traffic signal and the Fairway traffic signal? Um, you know, I drive on Fairway to Parkway, and there's like, when I turn left, there's always maybe four cars that go, and it doesn't seem like it's long enough that once you empty out the traffic, that would allow down at Fisher more time to be able to turn. So, is there a consideration of looking at the timing of both those signals?
That is consideration as, as a, for a long, uh, to make operations better at, at Fisher, to, so folks who are making that left or on either side or trying to drive through the intersection could find a gap, uh, more e- easily in, in those peak times. That's definitely something to consider. Because of the spacing of the signals, in, in particular in the case of Better Way, a platoon of vehicles, just a grouping of vehicles traveling through the intersection, may start to dissipate, and you may not have that, that, um, ability to keep that platoon together during that time. However, the Fairway signal is about at that, we use about 0.5 mile, half mile, as the threshold of where the platoons start to break apart. And so, that would be a consideration for, for traffic leaving Fairway.
Councilmember Somal?
So, just, Mr. Hendricks, if you can repeat, so the, the warrant requires 50 what?
So, uh, the, so warrant one, condition A, there's two conditions in, in the first warrant, and this is, um, a volume-based, requires 84 vehicles on the side street to...
Per hour for eight consecutive hours?
Hour for eight consecutive hours.
And how many times did we hit that?
And so, that was hit, that was actually hit zero times.
Zero of eight hours, and then the lower threshold?
The lower threshold was 42 vehicles, um, and that was met two of the eight hours.
Okay, so I, uh, hold on, I was getting there. Uh, what time of day would those two hit?
I don't have that number right in front of me.
Was it morning or afternoon?
It was in the morning, in the morning, uh, peak hours. So, I believe that, seven to eight, eight to nine, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
So, please, we're in a council discussion now, please let these guys do their job.
Just wanna make sure I understood what you said. The, the half mile that you referred to on the platooning coming off of Fairway, going downhill, the half mile is to Better Way or to Fisher?
To Fisher, so, right, it's about a half mile between Fisher and...
That's about where you think the platooning would break up?
Exactly.
And so, by the time I get to Orchard farther down, it would be, you would think that it, it would have been broken up and similarly...
It's pretty dispersed at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that, that was based on information from Texas DOT as well.
Council Jeans?
Mr. Hendricks, you testified that, uh, for the traffic coming down the Parkway, there is need for some sort of signage to slow vehicles down, and your sign that says traffic control ahead or something similar to that, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and actually, because of the changing condition, we, we recommend that as installation, yeah.
So, my, my pointer, my question is, if I'm coming down the Parkway in that half-hour piece before I get to Fisher, if, if I, if I'm traveling 40 miles an hour around the, where the holding pond is, if I'm going 40 miles an hour and don't put my foot on the gas, I'm going 50 miles an hour at Fisher. So, and I'm just trying to do it right, I'm not accelerating, I'm just, and it's beautiful there, so it's, you're not focusing on it. So, I, I think that, that grade sort of is like a hidden danger point, uh, almost like further up the hill where you gotta go around the corner to see the stoplight. So, there is a, a flashing light that would cause people to slow down and know that something's up ahead. It seems to me we need a flashing light, especially to slow down the commercial vehicles, the, the ones with lumber on them and rocks on them, 'cause those people get to be flying down there. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is, this makes a lot of sense, the Hawk, but I think there needs to be more of a warning device, and whether we need to agree with, to that now or later, but I would ask us to all consider that, that it needs to be sort of a flashing light that'll get people's attention, at least an opportunity to get people's attention at a, at a reasonable point coming down that, that grade that is sort of a dangerous grade because it doesn't look like, it doesn't look like anything.
We could absolutely consider that. When we looked at the stopping sight distance requirements based on the M U T C D, it, it did meet those requirements, which is why our design did not include any of those flashing indications. However, there is nothing to prohibit us going up and above that, that restriction. One thing on the Hawk signal which is unique is because of its resting and dark phase, the sudden, like, once a pedestrian pushes the push button and it starts to activate, you'll get about three flashes of the yellow light bef, or it does a, the steady yellow timed exactly for that 50 mile per hour traffic to, to see that indication and to, to stop appropriately. We could go ahead and add time as, as necessary to ensure that other vehicles continue to stop it, so it can go up to six seconds if necessary.
Recommend that discussion go to Public Works. What you're really, and just by mechanics, whichever way we go, it's probably a change or amendment to the contract, so we'll have to work that through Public Works and whatnot.
Good.
Uh, but it's, we, I, we can't effectively change the contract as outlined tonight. They already submitted a dollar figure against what you, what we sent them, so you can't change what we sent them without having that other discussion. So, Sean, I ask that you take that discussion up in Public Works. All right, Councilmember Ross?
So, when you're heading down the hill, and there's the Hawk signal, it's gonna start flashing, like you said. Now, are the lights bold enough? If you compare it to a traffic signal, is the timing going to be the same? Are you gonna still have the same amount of yellow and then red for a traffic signal as for a Hawk? And is it going to, are the lights the same size? Are they gonna be just as bright?
Absolutely, they will match all of the equipment that is already currently on the Parkway and elsewhere for traffic signals. They are essentially the same indications, just in a different configuration.
Okay. Truck will stop at this traffic signal like it will stop, stop at the Hawk?
Exactly.
Same risk?
We, we would time it, if, if it was a full signal, we would do the exact same type of timing. The only difference is when the pedestrian gets the flashing, don't walk hand.
Right.
And the wig wag is what we, we call it as well. That is the only change between, um, that timing on, on Snoqualmie Parkway between a Hawk and a main, and a full signal.
Councilmember Lussay?
Um, I guess I'm ask, I'm asking, you want me to just fire my questions out there and let those go, or do you want me to wait till other folks have opportunities to speak? I'm, I'm asking the Mayor Protem if I can have a little bit of time to ask questions of multiple folks in the, with staff.
Uh, I, go ahead.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, go ahead and...
So, I'll leave it to staff or, or the seat attorney or, or you, Mr. Hendricks, to answer these questions, but I'm interested in confirming on the, if the, if the signal is installed and confirming then that if, if the beacon's installed as designed, it can be reused, except, well, except for the signalized part, but the, the poles, the crossing, the, the conduit, everything that's installed for the, for the intersection now, minus the beacons themselves, can be reused for a future intersection, for a future four-way traffic stop intersection later?
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay. And if then, you know, the future development moves forward or some fut, or something changes the warrants, which in theory could be an additional traffic study, would, would that then change anything that we, we are installing now from the standpoint of, if, it doesn't, I guess I'm asking the same question twice in two different ways, I'm trying to get the same answer, so maybe I won't put you through that. Um, it's been a long night, I think everybody admits that. I guess this question for staff, there was a, I, I, I asked for some question clarification. I'd like to ask a clarification question on a response I received that was related to doing an additional traffic study and pedestrian analysis on Fisher intersection. Uh, it was indicated that it would be less than $10,000 and, and, and might take, uh, I'm trying to understand with the timeline at which it would take to do that sort of additional traffic study, um, for that, so I don't know who that question is, who that would be best to, to either Dan or, or Brian or whoever.
Yeah, as, what's been talked about was that the 2015 traffic study, um, as both Woody Creek and Ironwood were totally built out, then we feel that the minor street vehicular numbers would essentially be the same. So, yes, we could do another traffic study, but in this particular case, as no growth in the foreseeable future would be happening, that we feel the numbers that we already have are valid.
If, if you were to do another traffic study, how long would it take?
Less than a month.
And would that be a sufficient time to, to conduct that traffic study before the grant money would have to be accepted and not lost?
It's kind of a loaded question with, um, on the grant, P S R C has obligated it already, so now what we are under is DOT review essentially, and so we haven't lost those, and within a month, we wouldn't lose that. Again, I...
There is a timeline on the bid, though.
There is a timeline on the bid that we would have to get a written approval from the contractor saying that they would still, um, keep the bid prices at that, and what they've done so far.
Bar, but barring that, it's a, it's a rebid.
If, if they refuse to hold to the bid prices that they've put forth, yes, we would have to rebid.
But it's, it's, it's the, I'm trying to say this, say this in a way that, that is not, I don't wanna load the question, so I'm trying to, it is a consideration of the city that the traffic study as conducted in 2015 is still valid to the conditions as they existed then or similar to the conditions they exist now in studying the Fisher Avenue, uh, numbers?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those neighborhoods generating that traffic have not grown in the interim.
Okay, I'm just gonna, uh, I'll end my comments just as general, our general discussion that I'm, I'm gonna, I continue to focus on safety. I'm really, my biggest concern in this whole thing is the safety of our citizens and our, and, and, um, just everyone in general that uses that intersection. I recognize that, uh, through all the discussion, that there is gray area regarding whether or not a full traffic signal is, is, is done. I, however, will ha, default on the side of, of, you know, caution first from the standpoint of, um, city taking on something that they don't need to, uh, the city taking on, taking risks that it shouldn't because the risk then gets passed on to its citizens. And so, I think, you know, from the standpoint of all the information here, I'm, I, you know, given the responses to the reuse of the information, the, the Hawk signal at least is a first step towards getting to a four-way signal, which is what everyone really does want. We just can't do it yet, and so I think I'll, I'll leave it at that.
All right, let me do a math. Mr. Jeans, any further contribution?
No.
Catherine?
No.
Jim?
No.
Matt?
No.
Sean? Peggy?
No.
I, I think I've had my say too. All right, thank you. Further discussion, are we ready to move to a vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It is six to one, motion passes. Thank you all for, uh, a lively discussion tonight. And at that stage...
You got more?
18035.
All right, we're into Agenda Bill 18035, Local Agency Professional Service Cost Plus Fixed Consultant Agreement. It comes out of, okay? Huh? Okay, why don't, um, let's do this, I'd like to entertain, uh, let's do, uh... I'd like to entertain, let's do a three-minute break.
Do we have more?
And then we'll get back together to do this Agenda Bill, and then we have an executive session.
We have another one?
Huh?
We have another one?
I swear, I showed my little script.
AKA Hawk Signal Project, which will be paid for in part by $175,000 in federal highway administration funding. Per federal requirements, the city has executed a letter of understanding with Washington Department of Transportation by which WashDOT will serve as a certified acceptance authority to assure compliance with federal requirements. The letter of understanding requires that the city utilize a WashDOT-approved consultant to inspect the project in accordance with the contract documents, WashDOT requirements, and other applicable state and federal laws. Because Partit prepared the design plans and specifications for the project, WashDOT has indicated its approval of the city utilization of Partit Engineering to perform construction management services for the Fisher-Hawk project. The form of the contract and the provisions for calculating the cost plus fixed fee are required by WashDOT Local Agency Guidelines Manual that governs contracts for projects constructed with federal funds. Move to approve the Local Agency Professional Service Con... Cost Plus Fixed Fee Consultant Agency Agreement for the provision of construction management inspection services for Fisher-Hawk Signal Project and authorize the mayor to just sign.
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
Uh...discussion?
Mr. Coleman's here if you want.
All right, you want to key this one up?
What would you like to know?
Little background.
Little background. Um...Partit was hired sometime ago to do the design for the Fisher-Hawk signal. When talking with Phil Sugami, who is the local...
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's the mic.
Yeah, use the handheld mic.
Oh, handheld?
You're too tall for that.
Are we...this one on?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Um, Phil Sugami, who is one of the managers at the local programs for DOT. After speaking with him, well, let me...a little background on federal aid project, federal grant projects. One of the requirements is you have construction management, you have design. Design, if you...unless you're a certified authority for...approved by DOT, you cannot do the design on your own or the construction management on your own. You have to hire somebody to do it. Sometime ago, we hired Partit. They did the design of the Hawk Signal and, uh...since the funds that are being utilized for the engineering, the design and the construction management are city funds, programs has given us the authority to hire Partit, who did the original design, to do the construction management on this. If these were grant funds, we would be required to do an RFQ or Request for Qualifications process in order to find the...a suitable consultant, and then we would go through a negotiation for scope and fee.
Just not a grant.
So...
For a contractor of this type, is it customary for occasionally for WashDOT to do this?
No.
Yeah, okay. Council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Wait a minute.
Whoa, 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 yeah.
I'm sorry, you're right. Are there members of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item before we make motion? Sorry, it's getting late. All right, Anna, we'll go with you first.
Thank you. Anna Sotella, 7713 Center Boulevard, Southeast. So, for me, as a merchant for 12 years, and after the state auditor report gave a report that it was proven that Partit was overcharging the developers, which those fees then got passed down to me as a tenant because the developer's not going to pay them, they got passed down to anyone who bought a house during that time. We are the ones that paid it. The city attorney at the time said that the city was not out any money by using Partit, but we were. So for me to hear this 12 years later, it is insult to injury to be using a contractor that the state auditor said overcharged us. And I'm happy to share that state auditor's report with you. I'm happy to show the allegations. The same exact engineer in that corner, insult to injury. I would never use a vendor that overcharged me ever again.
Monica?
Monica Lowney, yes, to add to that, I did read that report. Thank you very much, Anna. I believe the attorney general stated Partit charged about $8 million to the city of Snoqualmie in a seven-year period. I'm not quite sure, but it was 700...
$7 million is what the fees were overcharging.
Okay, yeah, like $785,000 a year is what our engineering firm here has used, yet our city continues to use them, and I absolutely do not know why. As a matter of fact, regarding the flawed design of the Hawk Signal, which we now know is incomplete because there are not blank signs on Fisher nor any warning signs on the parkway, we paid nearly $35,000 in 2015, yet I have a document that I've shared with all of you where King County offered to do the identical work for $12,500. So why are we paying triple to Partit when the attorney general has already told our city they're overcharging you? You could have three full-time engineers on staff for what this contractor is charging. Oh, six, I'm sorry, six. So I'm sorry, but I just think this is a waste of taxpayer money, and you should not approve this. You need to put it out to bid to other engineering firms. Partit is not the only game in town. As a matter of fact, Gary just told me he could do that traffic survey in two weeks for $2,500. I bet Partit would charge you $15,000. So maybe we should open our eyes up a little bit to using other vendors that would benefit our city and the citizens who actually pay the bill. Thank you.
Others wishing to make comment before we move on? All right. Any further discussion, Mr. Lys...Lusay?
Yeah, I...I understand that the simplicity of using the same engineer that did the design, but I think we clearly have, uh...have some concern over that, uh, just in general. I don't see why a competitive bid would be a bad thing. I don't...I don't understand where that would be a problem.
Engineering work is not competitively bid. It's...we've talked about this with the council a number of times. It's subject, just like architectural work, to the RFQ process where you select the most qualified, and that is the reason that...
Submit it to the RFQ process.
On the previous, on the aspect, and the statute says that price is not...may not be a consideration in the RFQ process. And that's why the length of time related to that, that we asked the county council agreed with the declaration of emergency to waive that competitive selection process for the Canyon Springs process. That would be the process here. It's not one where someone would say, take a bid and say, well, I'll do it for $2,500 or I'll do it for $3,000. It's not like construction.
Then what's to keep us from just putting it out for an RFQ then?
Time. We...you've just let a construction contract with the award that there's going to be a notice to proceed issued. I can't remember what the specs say, but in relatively short order, and with the hope of having this project installed and operational by fall. If you're talking about a multi-week selection process, it throws that whole timetable out of whack. And Mr. Coleman may...or Mr. Marcin can may want to add more to that.
Before we go there, though, I guess I would recommend, uh, Public Works did do a review. This is...this is the gas station, right?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Public Works did, at the time, did a review in depth down to phone bills and everything else with Partit at that time. I would suggest that we, versus sidetracking this, that we go back and review that data. We'll bring it back into Public Works and review that data as to what was done before we, uh, dredge up stuff that we've already addressed and have had discussions with the contractor on. Mr.?
All right, so I had trouble taking in everything I just heard. I heard the attorney general has some concern, and I also heard...I heard that the attorney general has a concern, and I also heard that the state auditor has a concern. Those are the two things. I wrote them down as they were being said, so I'm confused.
It was only the state auditor.
State auditor, I'm sorry.
It was not the attorney general.
All right, and then, um, so the state auditor concern, mayor, was what you were referring to? The state auditor concern that was raised?
Yes.
And so, did I understand you to say that...
Don't call me mayor.
A pro tem, mayor pro tem? Am I understanding that the council, or at least a committee of the council, has looked into that matter at some point in the past and had decided to proceed with doing additional work with Partit after doing that review?
Yes.
And with full knowledge of the state auditor's report?
Yes.
And you're asking that the Public Works, Parks and Public Works Committee perhaps re-review that just to confirm that...
Full eyes open, yes. Let's review then and go through that, what was done.
But at this point, perhaps you were...I think you were saying that the evaluation of the council has been that we should continue to do work with Partit.
Uh, that was where we proceeded from that stage forward, yes.
Thank you.
And I...I just...I can't bring all those...we need to go get the homework. I can't give you all the specifics of...
I was gonna ask you for this...
...what we went through and everything else.
I just want to know that this had been looked at and a decision had been made looking at that report and aware of that report.
Yes. I did similar grumbles at the time. Dan will remember, and we are where we are as a result of those discussions.
Just by way of context, since that time, Partit, as Mr. Kutsal in particular, has served as city engineer for development review for remaining build-out on the ridge for the hotel. They provided construction management services for the Tocal Roundabout. All of those contracts dwarf the proposed $24,000 contract that's in front of you right now.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes?
Let's say.
Okay, motion passes. Oh, hang on a minute. The ayes have it, motion passes. We are moving on. All right. Any items...are there any items for committee of the whole? Catherine?
I have one. So, um, the Snoqualmie Valley Community Network is an organization that focuses on youth development, youth leadership, and youth suicide and substance abuse. And they awarded the city of Snoqualmie Community with the Most Heart at their Heart of the Valley Gala this past weekend. So I wanted to show it to you, and it's going to be on display. So...
I expect it to be there.
It'll be on display here at City Hall. That's it. It's cool.
Councilman Jeans?
On committee of the whole, I met with the tribe today. I'm the liaison for the council with the tribe, and there were some administrative things that will work out that'll be evidence that we're...we are working better together to resolve differences. The one thing that, um, Michael Ross, who's on the tribal council and myself, really want to do, find a way to do, is for our full council and their full council to meet together. Perhaps, um, it's not to go to war with each other, it's a matter of getting to know each other, it's getting to identify the things that we agree on, identify the things that we don't understand about where we are on particular issues. And so, um, the idea is after their election, which I think is in April, perhaps in June, we'll sort of shoot for a date in June where the councils will get together. It'll probably have to be an announced hearing, a court announced council meeting by our rules, so it'd be a public meeting. But it would be in a...the idea to have it in a neutral location and to just get to know each other better and to get to understand each other better and to move forward together better.
I think it would be a good idea. Other items for the committee of the whole? All right, uh...
Brian?
Sorry.
Peggy first.
Peggy.
Okay, so, um, one of the things that I noticed when we were looking at Hawk crosswalks is that they seem to exist in slower speed zones. And I'd like to look at the possibility, since there is a park right on the parkway, for us to have a speed zone for that area around that intersection.
Okay, um, what committee would we...
Public Works.
Public Works? Sorry, Sean. I would ask Public Works to review a potential speed zone around the park near Fisher intersection.
Good.
And I'll add to that.
Okay.
Because I gotta...
You're the chair, you could add.
I gotta pass the buck on it. So we will definitely take that up. And I would also pass on to Catherine, uh, the exploration of, um...sorry, chief, perhaps enhanced patrol along the parkway at critical hours. I recognize that we have two cities to manage, but I also understand that each sort of has a quasi...or quai-zai, depending on who you are, force that's their own. And so it's...it's to the point now that I would probably take a very serious look at if we needed to get funding for more officers in our city. We live in a great city with very low crime. Don't tell Debbie that. But I think we have an opportunity to make our streets a little more...a little safer. So I'll task you with that as the chair.
Speed control.
Yeah, but since that's your committee, I would task you with maybe exploring with the chief opportunities that we might have, either through signage or people or cameras. Just kidding. What might work?
I'll look into it.
Okay, I'm still recovering from cameras. Peggy.
I also would like to know if we could establish some sort of a...and it costs, it's at least $200 for running a red light at the Hawk Signal.
I'd go for prison time. I just don't know if that's legal.
So, public safety, can you take up the current infraction enforcement for running traffic signals? And does that include Hawk in what it is?
Okay.
I just don't remember right off...
There are statutory maximums. I don't know off the top of my head where the $200 would fit in, but I can research that and brief the committee.
Okay. And Councilman Lusay?
So I'm gonna also, uh, add to public safety in regards to the Hawk intersection improves...improved or increased signage for safety purposes, specifically looking at signs on the parkway or signs on Fisher if they're relevant to those sorts of things. Is that would be public...still be public?
Well, I think we already actioned that Public Works to look at because it's a contract change.
It's signage as opposed to...yeah.
But maybe you guys can have the same discussion.
You can look at it for a public safety standpoint and also Public Works.
But I think the agenda bill, if there's a resulting agenda bill, would come from Public Works.
Yeah, I understand.
That's where I was headed. Is it tomorrow?
Councilmember Jeans?
A matter that we brought up at our retreat, and I'd...I'd like us to talk about it again. At council committee meetings, we leave it to the chair as to whether we'll take input from the public. And some of the chairs like that is a good idea, some of them don't like it. But I'd like us to discuss that and hopefully come to agreement so that there's uniformity at those council committee meetings. So, F and A kicking around?
Yeah, we'll take it forward as a potential change to the council procedures, basically requiring public comment, stiffening that language up. We got a lot of actions flashing tonight. Staff is taking...
Doody's taking notes.
Okay, because I've got too many things going to remember all of it. Councilmember Mayhew?
Mr. Pro Tem. I assume that Chief Phipps was taking note of the traffic study with the 10 miles over the speed limit. I have noticed enforcement recently on...I don't know if that's a stepped-up thing.
Personal experience?
It was not personal experience. Um, on the downhill there in the afternoon, it did seem that...I saw a couple cars pulled over. It didn't seem, unfortunately, that the officers were having any problem finding people to pull over. So I assume you're taking note of that and the concern expressed by citizens and the council about the speed on that area, and anything you can do to help would, I'm sure, be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilmember Mayhew, I believe, had asked staff for a report on two other issues. One's the ethics hearing officer issue, which I'll ask Attorney Sterbank to address, and the other one's the operational consulting, which I'll report on.
As the council probably recalls, the ethics hearing officer did issue a determination of sufficiency and probable cause, which required him to then set a hearing unless he dismissed the violation as minor or inadvertent. My understanding is he has not done the latter, and that a hearing, which is close to the public, is scheduled for February 13th in the afternoon, which is tomorrow. And thereafter, there is a time period under the code, I believe, 30 days for the ethics hearings officer to issue a written report and recommendation to the mayor. And a copy of that report goes to the city council as well, on the findings and conclusions.
So we'd expect no later than early to mid-March to see that, perhaps earlier. Thank you.
And then on the operational consultant work, Clark Newberg was approved by council two, three weeks ago now, I think, or maybe it's closer to four. Anyway, they're on...they're on board here. In fact, one of them's up next to my office, and I understand that they're proceeding expeditiously. They've been contacting several staff, getting a lot of information and documents and talking to particular department heads about particular procedures for various elements within the finance and administration areas. And I hope to give you a bit more detailed update within the next two weeks.
All right, thank you. Further items, committee of the whole?
I have something.
Go ahead, Peggy.
So this evening, for the Fisher agenda item, I really felt that it was extremely biased, what we...information we got from our staff as far as what should happen. I didn't feel that there was evenly balanced as far as having more than one perspective. Um, I'm really disappointed. I thought that was what our...we are supposed to be receiving is unbiased and balanced information. And I'm really disappointed that we couldn't allow another professional speak more than two minutes. And I'd like us to look at how can we provide an opportunity for an opposing perspective to have a balanced timeframe and an ability to do visualization on a topic.
Sorry, there's...as long as we're bringing up things that might go to committee, one of the citizens brought up the topic of the lack of a sidewalk between Orchard and Better Way and the impact on pedestrians having to cross over and then cross over again if they wanted to travel on that side of the parkway. I wonder if the appropriate committee could take a look at that topic? And the topic being whether or not something could or should be done for that.
All right. Thanks.
In case you didn't everything do.
Let's look at extending the sidewalk to nowhere to somewhere.
I'm gonna have to bring up the one I wasn't gonna bring up, then. I'm not sure where it falls. Maybe it falls with committee of the whole as a discussion during council, but we're having difficulty keeping to our time schedule for committee meetings, and they are running long and/or overlapping with other commission meetings, particularly on Mondays. I've asked Mark Hoffman to poll some of the planning commission members and also then subsequently the Parks and Events Committee members also to discuss alternate dates for those to allow the council committee meetings to run on Mondays and Tuesdays and the commission meetings to run on alternate dates, because we're running into problems with room schedules and timelines. There's just a lot of things on our plate, and maybe that's because we're a relatively new council, we've just got to go through it all. So I think that's...I don't know where that falls. Maybe it stays in committee of the whole.
Well, I would put it, uh, either the next council or the council after that, do we want a council roundtable in which we discuss particularly committee and commission board schedules?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so can...let's take that up in F and A about council roundtable discussing committee meeting times? Yeah, and I think it's important that we do those deep dives, so...all right. All right, further items?
Mayor Pro Tem? A quick clarification, and to my previous comment, the time period for the ethics hearings officer to issue the written findings and conclusions is actually 20 days from the hearing, not 30, so we would anticipate that coming into the first week of March.
All right, so let's move...are there any citizens wishing to make comments on items not prior discussed or not currently on the agenda before we conclude tonight's meeting? Monica? And it's two minutes.
Okay, well, I just wanted to speak about the appearance of fairness doctrine because I believe it is very important to be biased and fair, especially when citizens are taking hours out of their day. I've been here since 4:30, and it's almost 11:00. So I just want to tell a quick story. In November of 2015, I was at a city council meeting. It was a dark, rainy, cold night. Most people had left, and the issue that I wanted to hear about was, of course, left for the last on the agenda, which is pretty typical. And I wanted to speak about it. It was listed as the final vote for Fisher Avenue to close discussion for a four-way traffic signal and install a Hawk crosswalk. And it was listed on the agenda as item for discussion. However, with very few people in the audience, suddenly the mayor said, "We're voting on this," and I raised my hand to speak, and I'll never forget it, because Matt Larson pointed his finger at me and said, "Monica, we've heard enough from you. That's...that's not democracy." And I actually have witnesses. They even told me outside, "You should hear...you could have my attorney for free. What the city just did was totally illegal." So that is why I asked you, Brian Holloway, and you know I like you personally, and you too, Bob, to recuse yourself from voting tonight, because that 2015 vote to convert the Fisher Avenue issue from no longer the contractual obligation that the city signed, which, by the way, you're still obligated to, and switching it over to a Hawk crosswalk without any community input was illegal. And once again, I do believe you should hire Gary for $2,500. He'll do a full survey. Partit analyzing Partit is not a third...independent third party. That's not fair, okay? I know you guys love Partit. They charge an arm and a leg to the city. Good for them, but you need to bring in some outside contractors, and I hope you'll do something nice, at least thank Gary for the thousands of dollars and the hours that he put in to trying to protect citizens, which our city staff does not seem interested in doing. Thank you very much.
You're good, Anna? Reflexing, Monica, I disagree with most of what you said, but we'll leave it at that. All right, at this stage, I would like to recess the city council to an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101II regarding litigation. Bob Sterbank, Bob Larson, Deborah Vigil are requested to be in attendance. The executive session is expected to last approximately 15 minutes, and there may be action following. Please clear the council chambers so we can go ahead and do that.
Mayor Pro Tem, if I could ask to amend that to include Police Chief Phipps, and we also have Shannon Reaganessi, who's our attorney for this matter.
All right, so...
Yeah, those two.